It is 6:01 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is on the wall up there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, united, individual, liberty, and justice. Thank you. Try to address everyone here. I'm Tina Keespa. I'm the Rutland Town Board Chair. I'd like to welcome you tonight. Thank you so much for coming out in person and online. It's very appreciated. Because we have a lot of people here, I would like to try to limit public comment to about two minutes a person. And if someone has already said exactly what you want to say, please feel free to say ditto so-and-so, just to save a little time so everyone can have a chance to speak. And I'd like to invite everyone that would like to comment to be able to say something first before we go back. Okay? So if anyone would like to comment, please put your hand up either online or in the room. I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Well, I'll just say that I was very disappointed that it went down a second time. As a community member, being a former educator here for over 20 years.
Thank you.
Tina?
Yes.
I think most people here would like to hear what you have to say about the preceding vote and how you're going to proceed before you comment on any particulars. At least that's me, that's my, I'd like to hear.
So what Don said was that he would, he thinks a lot of people here would like to hear what the board would have to say before commenting. But I just want to give everyone a chance to comment before we give our presentation, just to make sure everyone's heard. But we'll be happy to have public comment at the end as well. Anyone online? All right.
If nobody else will, I have a few things to say.
Sure.
I learned a few things since the last meeting that we came to. One of the things that they said in the agenda that said was that we have mandatory pre-K kindergarten because it was mandated by the state as a law.
Pre-kindergarten.
Pre-kindergarten. But if you, I'm not sure if everybody understands what the law really said. The law really said that you must have 10 hours per week for 35 weeks or 37 weeks. And I don't think that's what we're doing here. I think what we're doing here is we're doing eight hours a day, five days a week, for all 37 weeks. And that's why we have four kindergarten, pre-kindergarten people working in the, under that program. One of the other things I didn't understand was if you look at the, if you look at what happened last year versus this year, we have, I'm not going to say the right word, but there is four people that we have to help maintain the unruly students that we have from, that were here prior years.
Well, we-
I think they, I may get the right name. I think they call them interventionists.
Those are, those are not, interventionists are academic coaches. And we also have some behavior interventionists. So they're not the same. And we've had those for quite a while before-
We have four of them now.
We, well, they're different. There's academic interventionists, so there's reading specialists and math specialists and behavior specialists. So they're not all for unruly students. And I think there may be a misunderstanding a little bit about that. But they are to help our students raise their academics and also to access their education better for themselves and for the other students in the class. And they've been in place for quite a while. They're not, they're not new.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't catch that prior.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'll let somebody else ask a question.
Okay.
I don't, I can't think of anything off the top of my head anymore.
Thank you. Yes, Matt?
Might be helpful just to clarify for folks. In the last two budget votes, what, if anything, was different from prior years? Because I don't know if people do understand what is new or is not new about the budget this year.
I think that's a great question. We'll make sure Louis covers that in a few minutes. Anything else?
Could I ask if there was anybody from the Rutland Supervisory Union present tonight?
Yes. We have our Superintendent Chris Sell, and he was here at the last meeting as well. And we have Louis Malazo, our business manager, who was present last meeting, but, last Monday, but he is online tonight. And many teachers, I see. Our vice principal is here as well. And our head principal is online. She had off today for personal reasons, so.
And then Tina, myself, and Tim from this board represent Rutland Town on the Supervisory District Board, so.
Tina?
Yes.
The Supervisory Union budget is an assessment that is not negotiable, is that correct? That's an assessment that comes to us-
Correct.
And voters have nothing.
Yes, and we've had a surplus the last few years in that minimally for Rutland Town.
And a question I got from a voter was, what's a SLP position?
It's a speech and language pathologist.
Thank you.
Brian Collmore is trying to get on, and he's asking for, he's not able to get online and was looking for a phone number. Is there-
Tina?
Yes.
We had a conversation while we were counting votes. There's certain contractual relationships between the staff and the board. Could you touch on that a bit, like, what?
You mean contractual-
Dates that you have to notify a teacher of-
Yes.
Non-renewal of contract?
So I believe that's April 1st. So that's already passed.
Correct, well, I thought it was December 1st.
Yeah, I think it's April 1st. I might be wrong, yeah.
And how long does the current contract, when's the contract renew again?
So I believe after fiscal year '25. So negotiations start this year.
So for the budget, okay, so. And in the contractual relationships, a large increase in the budget was because of healthcare?
16.4%.
And that was contractually, that was by?
That was by the state. We have no say over that. But they have put it at a standstill. It will not increase for the next two years due to all of the tax burden, how that's affected states.
So the contractual rate is, is some percentage of co-pay by some of the staff?
So I believe that is negotiable, but we have not been able, we won't be able to change any of that until we go into negotiations again. And it's, I think, the standard 80/20 right now. Am I, is that correct, Chris?
Yes.
So I'll turn this over to Louis then, if Louis would like to present. And Louis, if you could also just share before you start your presentation, what we added this year to the budget from last year?
Okay, so in the presentation I was giving at the last meeting- Before the vote. So there was a slide which showed the total increase, which expenses up by 6.7%. And that was made up of three main categories. That's how we broke it down. So the first category is secondary tuition. So those would be the students that are tuitioning to somewhere other than Rutland Town for grades nine through 12. So students have a choice and can attend any approved public or private school in Vermont or out of Vermont. That increase was $282,000, which was 42% of the total increase. The second category was contractual salary and benefits. And that total was $223,000, which is 34% of the total increase. And that's made up of a few different items. So that would be a combination of the health insurance increase of 16.4%, as well as increases in wages, which are contractual for all of our union staff based on the negotiated agreement. Some of those are set for next year and some of those are estimates. For the teachers, they are set, but the ESP, which is the support staff, which is para-professionals, custodians, and admin assistants, it's an estimate. And then the third category, which is the remaining 24% of the increase, it's just everything else. So it's preschool tuition, which is 7% of that, SU assessments, fuel and electric increases, and all the other increases, which was approximately 5% of $35,000. So the main two categories are secondary tuition and contractual salaries and benefits, which are having an impact on our budget.
Does that help, Don?
Tina, can I come up?
Yeah.
So I think if I'm understanding what Louis is saying correctly, nothing was added to the prior year's budgets. The same stuff, but the costs have gone up.
Mostly. We also added a kindergarten para because we only had one shared between two classrooms. And our incoming kindergarten class is state mandated to have three classrooms due to its size. So we thought one between three would be very difficult. So we added one para educator, which has not been advertised or hired yet and still possible to be cut. We also added the seventh grade trip, which we took out on the second revision. We added lifetime sports, which the school community, although it was kind of a rushed increase, change to what we have had recently. It was very successful and families really enjoyed it. Kids got a lot out of it. So we put that into the budget as well. And I think those were the three. I think those were the three items. So on the second revision, we took out 5,000 from lifetime sports, leaving a good bulk of it, thinking that we could try to rework how we pay for it a little bit, but still wanted to have it because the kids enjoyed it so much and got a lot out of it, as did the teachers, seeing their, teachers and students together doing other activities other than just in school. I think it was very helpful for them, social, emotionally. And we also increased our scholarship line for students for field trips and other things because those costs are going up, up, up. And if we're taking out money from those activities, we want to make sure if we're asking families to pay for those students that can't pay, that they can still participate. So that's what we changed, I believe.
So then what else was changed between the first and the second?
So we took out, go ahead, Louis.
Tina, I'll go through that list in detail and just a moment when we start talking about the proposals. So before we do that, I do, I have that other, that other document that I can share, which shows the breakdown from Montpelier. I know that's, so. So through this budget process, and I know this is going to be a lot smaller than most people can see, but for those people that are online can see it, but I'm going to walk through this. This is a cash flow report that we received from the state.
Louis? Louis, the column on the right, can you get rid of it? It's blocking some of your presentation. The comments section. Thank you.
All right. So one of the questions that has come up this year as well as years in the past is, how much money are we sending as Rutland Town residents to Montpelier that is being raised in property taxes in Rutland Town? And so in the past, except for the last two years, Rutland Town was what some considered gold town, which means that you were collecting more in property taxes than you needed for the school. So that extra money was being sent to Montpelier. In the last two years, that's changed, where the amount that's being raised in property taxes from Rutland Town residents is not enough to cover school taxes. So the school tax budget is being supplemented by Montpelier or other state property taxes from the Ed Fund. So this report that we receive from, from the state AOE each year outlines the process or the calculation of the taxes and how much is coming from the town as well as how much is coming from the state. So the first highlighted area at the very top is our expense budget. That's what the taxpayers approved as the budget for the current year. Current year being June 1st, I'm sorry, July 1st, 2023 to June 30, 2024. The second highlighted line is the amount of total spending. So that's your total expenses minus any local revenues. Local revenues or anything other than property taxes. So this is the amount that we have to raise in taxes to pay our budget. So then the next highlighted line, that's our total education spending again, so that's $9,458,000. Moving on to the next section, this is the amount that's being raised in property taxes that's being paid to the school. So the first line that's in blue is the amount for homestead education property taxes. So that's residents that own, it's a primary home. And so that's $3,226,000. And then that's combined with the total property taxes that are being raised from non-homestead education taxes, which is $6 million. So that's a total of $9.2 million that's being raised by Rutland Town residents to go towards the school. Then the last piece, which is then highlighted in purple, and is also the bottom section in September, where it has the dates of September, December, and April. This is the amount that's being paid by the state treasury to help towards Rutland Town school budget. So that amount for this current year is $161,000. And that is paid in three installments. The second page of this is just more information, the details of the property tax calculation. But it's pretty much, it's saying the same information. It's showing how much is being raised in homestead property taxes versus non-homestead property taxes. But I know that it's been a question by many residents, so I just wanted to get that information out.
Question. Louis, Don Chaffee here. I would venture to say that there's less than 10% of the people, if that, in the town of Rutland that understand any of what you just finished saying. And in previous years, following Act 60, this, these, our boards and individual citizens have asked at various meetings of the superintendency and the business manager and so forth, how it's calculated that we became a gold town and what we have to do to not become a gold town. Now, you're saying that for two years, we have not been considered a gold town, but now we're receiving town. What are the factors that made that change happen? There's got to be a simpler answer.
It would be based on your tax rate, the amount of the Rutland Town school budget, what that number is, the tax rate and the grand list. So if your grand list and your tax rate is more, exceeds what your total school budget is, then you would be a gold town. You would be sending those excess funds that you're collecting to Montpelier or the state treasury, whatever people want to call it. But if you're not collecting enough based on your grand list to meet the needs of that budget, then that's when you become a receiving school.
I still don't understand what you just said. We, if the budget is, let's just say for argument's sake, say the budget's $100,000. If the budget was $100,000 and you raised $100,000 by taxes to pay that budget to be raised by taxes, then that's it. It's straightforward. You raise what you need. What causes to be a gold town?
So that's the way the town taxes work. So if you have $100,000 budget in your town, then you're raising $100,000 exactly based on your grand list. You're setting a tax rate to meet that $100,000 need. School taxes don't work that way. School taxes are equalized across the state. They're equalized by both the CLA calculation as well as the yield calculation. So everybody in the state of Vermont, all districts are, or all residents are paying into the Ed Fund. They're not paying into their school budget. They're paying into the Ed Fund and then the state divvies up that Ed Fund based on your spending.
Well, what do you pay into the Ed Fund? Wouldn't you pay what you owe for taxes?
You're paying what you owe based on that equalized yield and that equalized CLA that the state is providing to us.
So are you saying then that the equalized and the CLA changes that have taken place prior to the two years caused us not to be in a gold town situation?
Correct. There's been shifts in those numbers that have shifted Rutland Town status as a gold town.
Thank you very much.
Not shifts due to law, but shifts due to spending in Rutland Town as well as spending across the state. I mean, there's many factors that go into that.
Well, in past years, we've had to contribute up to, pretty close to $1 million, haven't we?
I don't know.
Do you recall the history of that, Louis?
I would have to go back. I mean, I've only been handling Rutland Town's budget for the last five years. And like I said, the last two years, you have not been sending. And I think the years before that, it was just a small amount. I mean, I definitely can go back and look for that information, but I don't have that with me tonight.
Yes, Matt?
So Louis, maybe you're getting to this in the next section. I'm not sure. But I think what is important for us to understand at this point is, what is it about our situation under the current state law that causes us to sort of be penalized under the formula so that our taxes would be disproportionately, I would argue, increased relative to what our budget is? Is that because the state is basically saying we aren't, our budget is too, too big for the number of equalized pupils? Or how does that formula work that we're facing, you know, this supposedly 16% increase property tax?
So I think we're talking about two different things now. So I mean, the calculation as far as the gold town status is different than what has just recently changed with Act 127. And I can talk about that in a second. As far as what's happened in the past, I mean, it's not anything that's penalizing Rutland Town residents. It's just the way the Ed Fund works in Act 68 is that it equalizes it across the state so that poorer towns don't have less resources to educate their students. So if it was not equalized, you would have a town, you may have a small, poor town that doesn't have enough funds to fund their school if you funded it similar to a town budget. So that's why the state with the Ed Fund and the yield equalizes that across the state to be able to share those resources. So that's the way Act 68 worked. Act 127, which is the new law, does, works in a similar fashion. It still equalizes it across the state. But what has happened with this new law is it's more heavily weighting factors that were not in Act 68. And that's what's having a negative impact on Rutland Town. And so that main factor is poverty level. And so where poverty level had a small impact in Act 68, it has a much significant, much more significant impact in Act 127. Whereas every student that reached, meets that poverty guideline is now almost counting doubled in that calculation. So if you look at like our, if you look at our pupil count in the calculation that I, what I presented at town meeting, we only have approximately, I think, 500 students in Rutland Town. But our pupil count is 769 pupils. And that is because of the weighting factors that this Act 127 calculation puts into play. So it looks at poverty levels. It looks at population density. It looks at ELL students. It looks at, this is another I didn't do- Ed level of education. So secondary students are weighted more heavily than pre-K students and elementary students. So all of those factors are contributing to that increase in the pupils. And so what happened that's impacting Rutland Town is because your poverty level is lower than the average in the state of Vermont, you didn't, your pupil count wasn't as heavily weighted as others. And so while everybody else has increased, your, or increased more, yours didn't increase as much. And that's that H850 incentive that you're receiving.
So the bottom-
Because you were disadvantaged by Act 127, they put in place an incentive to help transition you over the next five years so that you didn't feel the blunt of that impact all in one year. So in FY '25, you're receiving a 17 cent discount on your tax rate. And in FY '26, you'll receive 80% of that 17 cents. And then the following year, you'll receive 60% and then 40%. And eventually, that will transition out in FY '30 so that you will be receiving no discount.
So the bottom line is, even though we are no longer a quote-unquote gold town under the old law, we now, we have less poverty compared to other towns. And so therefore, we need to pay more under the state law.
Correct, correct, yes.
And that's regardless of any-
The two items are not related.
Well, right, but conceptually, I'm thinking-
They coincidentally cross paths, but one is not causing the other.
Understood. And I don't think voters understand that. So I think that's the aspect that needs to be highlighted for people, that it is this metric that is driving these numbers. It has nothing to do whatsoever with what this board is doing, what they've added to the budget, not added to the budget, what the increasing costs are. I think a lot of people are voting, saying, gee, the budget's going up by this percentage, and I don't like it. That seems unreasonable because they're looking at the numbers just the bottom, the total size of the budget. But that's not something that this board has any control over whatsoever. It's simply a formula that says, your town doesn't have as much poverty as other towns do, so we need you to pay more to equalize under this new formula.
And an interesting fact, Louis, under this, what you've just explained, is that in previous years, way back when, the school lunch program subsidized, was subsidized based on a poverty level in your school system. And since ours is now lower, it should be lower, except the state intervened and said, everybody's getting free lunch. And that cost, if people knew what it was, to throw away half of the food because of the quality of it is a very, very serious situation. And there's a lot of money to be saved there, except over and over and over again, Tina, you explained it when you were going through an earlier answer to a question, we hear the same answer. The state changes the formulas for student-teacher ratio. They don't give us any money for it, but they change the ratios. How do they do that? And with what wisdom do they do that? I don't know, having taught for 17 years, whether anybody way up there that doesn't even know what the system is, and we have so few impoverished, impoverished students, which means that we have a pretty good socioeconomic mix of students here that are motivated. One would think that you could probably handle more than what the state says is a minimum. But you have no control over that, unless you do have control over that. If you exceed the minimums that they require, what would they do to you?
You mean the maximums?
Chris?
No.
What's the enforcement mechanism if you go over the student-teacher ratios? Because that's what you get into when the people are faced with this dilemma of, how do you reduce a budget? Well, the biggest way to reduce a budget is to reduce staff. Everybody knows that. Nobody wants to do it because nobody wants to see X or Y or Z go bye-bye because we have good staff here, excellent staff. But if you combined grades or you- But if you combined grades or you increased grade sizes, you could reduce staff. You could do a transitional program to do that. And, well, I'm just saying, those things that the state has control over are really driving the drastic increases in costs in this school system. And I know that, having taught a class of thirty-five students and never a class less than twenty-one or twenty-two students.
I think you brought up a lot of good points. I mean, and that's one of the items we try to stress during this budget season. And in the letters that we sent out, the flyers before the first vote, as well as in our town meeting presentation, there's a lot of pieces of the calculation that we have no control over as a school board or as residents. Our control ends at setting a budget and approving that budget. But as far as the calculation of the pupil count, the yield, the CLA, those are all items that are outside our control. And even in the budget, there's many items in the budget that are outside of control. I mean, like you said, the meals program. I mean, we didn't choose to offer free meals for everyone, which is costing the state thirty million dollars. That was a state mandate. There's many other mandates that they pass each year which create increases to our budget. Health insurance, we didn't have control over that. That was a, that is now in the hands of the statewide bargaining committee. So, even in setting that budget, a lot of that really are numbers that we are forced with. Secondary tuition, schools announce their tuition. We have no control over negotiating with them or even limiting those tuition numbers. So, if a school puts a fifteen percent increase in their secondary tuition budget, we just have to, we have to eat it and pay that. We can't deny a student to go to secondary school or choose where they go. We just have to pay the bill for whatever school they choose.
Thank you, Louis. Do we want to do, Colin, do you want to do your?
Yeah.
Is there, are you able to get that up, Chris? Thank you very much, Louis, appreciate it. Please don't go anywhere.
Brian Colmore, I don't know whether you want to weigh in on any of this, but certainly be glad to hear what you think. Good idea.
Sure, go ahead.
So, there are so many tentacles to this whole situation. I don't want to take issue with Don Chaffee, but I mentioned once before, he said ten percent of the voters could possibly understand how we fund education in Vermont. I think it's seven people in the whole state that actually sit down and-
It's the gray eyes.
Explain how this all goes together.
I'll take your disagreement.
I got to come to the school board's defense here, and also the voters' defense and the teachers' defense. This is, there's so many pieces to this that people are trying to grapple with. We've got DMBCs that raised, that rose up about twenty percent last year. If you haven't renegotiated your, you know, your license or your registration, you'll find out on July 1st that it's gone up quite a bit. There's a payroll tax that's coming for childcare. There's the Affordable Heat Act, which lurks in the background. The yield bill, I think, was finally voted out by the Senate Finance Committee, and I'll give you details on that. But let me just explain, if I could, that Vermont as a whole, and you can take a lot of different data and figure out where we are in the country, we're probably either one, two, or three most expensive state in the country. Not Rutland Town. I think Rutland Town has for years been fiscally responsible and done their best to keep the tax rate down. But as Louis pointed out earlier, there is little relationship between what you folks on the school board vote for your budget and what comes back from Montpelier in terms of the property tax rate. So, Vermont spent an average in 2020 of $20,838 per pupil. And we had, I think in Rutland Town, the spending per pupil is somewhere around $13,500, give or take a few hundred dollars. So, we're considerably lower than the average in Vermont. And that's because, again, the school board has made some tough choices along the way. But what's happening is people are just reacting to all this other stuff that's swirling around, and they're voting no, not knowing that they really don't have any effect on what the property tax rate's going to be. So, the yield bill was voted out today by, I believe, the Senate Finance Committee. And unless things change, in 2025, you can all write this down, pursuant to Title 32, the property dollar equivalent yield shall be $10,005. And notwithstanding any other provisions and any other stuff to the contrary, the non-home state rate will be at 1.35, 1.375 per hundred. So, guess what? Everybody is going to, whether they like it or not, regardless of what district you're in, you're going to pay more next year. But most of it, there's no, there's no way that the school, the local school board has any control over it. You can't determine what the healthcare insurance requirements are going to be for teachers. That's way out of any sort of school board decision. So, what they're trying to do desperately, and I say "they," the Senate Finance Committee, because there's all kinds of potential new taxes coming on clothing and your sugar tax, a cloud tax, short-term rentals. They're desperately trying to buy this property tax rate down for 2025. And guess what? We're going to be in the same situation in 2026 fiscal year because this is a short-term sort of solution to it. But they want to get it down on average to about twelve and a half percent property tax increase. So, if Rutland Town is thirteen or thirteen and a half, which may be where it winds up, I guess we can all consider ourselves lucky because there's other places where it's going to be much higher. But most of the blame for this is for higher-spending school districts over which Rutland Town has nothing to do with, and they can't change that. All of what we collect in Rutland Town is sent up to Montpelier, and the big pile of money there is then, is distributed back down to the local communities. And Louis was right about the situation with the weighting for the pupil. Rutland Town, for better or worse, is in a much better position economically than a lot of other towns. And the bill that was passed two years ago, I think it was 127, gave more weight to areas that had more poverty, more second English-language students, all of that sort of stuff than Rutland Town does. So, in a sense, we are penalized for that, just like we were with the gold town situation. So, it's so complicated, and I try to really understand all this, but I don't understand it. But I don't think it's fair for anybody to blame teachers or the school board for what's happened. It happens at other places, and we're just going to have to deal with it. And I really hope that the third effort here to get this budget passed happens. And I'll be voting for the budget coming up.
Can I ask a question to make a comment to Brian? Senator, Don Chaffee, two things. Are you, are you aware of whether Representative Kornheiser's addition bill, tack-on bill, is actually going to be presented during this session? That bill-
Well, I-
That bill-
Tell me, tell me what was in the bill, Don, I might be able to have-
The prospective bill that she wants to add in is to give school boards in any towns that have not passed a budget for three times the right to impose a budget, basically any budget, without voter approval.
Well, that has not come across to the Senate. What is in statute now, and you probably know from being up there, if we don't pass the third time in Rutland Town, the school board is going to be forced to look at the year before's budget and borrow up to eighty-seven percent of what that budget was, which means, if you do the math, there's a huge ten, twelve, thirteen percent cut in what was passed a year ago.
Yes.
So, I don't think that's a very good situation to put ourselves in. And then, you've still got to pass the budget at some point.
Yeah. That's pretty much, I think, what Chairman Kornheiser had as her motivation for doing this, to save the school boards. Her comment was, well, at first glance, this might appear to be a little undemocratic, you think. However, people have a right to unelect school board members, and that was her answer. So, talk about putting it down, passing the crap downhill, there you go. But the other point I wanted to make, when you said students on ESL and poverty students and so forth, that's the new calculation for all of this money shift. Who's responsible? Who is the largest single individual responsibility for the distribution of impoverished people into communities?
Well, I guess the Agency of Education, if you get right down to it. But again, we've overloaded our educational system with all kinds of social programs that, quite frankly, in my view, don't belong in that category. If we need to help kids with, you know, stuff at home or other social issues, I'm not sure that's the function of the educational system. I think we need to get back to just really basic things and find funding, if we need to, for the other things that we need to do to help kids along. But, you know, I don't mean to make this political at all or partisan. I just, I'm trying to figure out a way for us to move forward. I don't think it's healthy to keep turning down school budgets. But at the same time, I totally understand the frustration of the taxpayers and the voters who say, enough is enough, I'm not going to do this again. But I don't know what the alternative is.
Well, what I was referring to was the state has the responsibility, has the responsibility for providing for the homeless. They've abdicated that responsibility, and now they're putting them into hotels everywhere, and they're redistributing these people and bringing in immigrants and putting them, Burlington's full of them, Colchester, whatever. The state puts the people there that are requiring ESL and a whole mess of other programs. So, you know, it's not something that just happens on its own.
No, but I think, again, you've jumped to another topic that we're probably not going to need to talk about tonight. I don't disagree with you, Don, but, you know, I'm trying to focus on the school budget and why it was rejected twice, and what we can do to get it passed the third time and move on.
Well, there's no question that the people are voting against the state's policies. I firmly believe that. I don't think anybody here is voting against any school board member in this room. But what, what alternative do you have when you're frustrated and you can't afford to live in this state?
Well, I wish I had a really easy answer for you, but I don't. This yield bill, which came out of the House Ways and Means Committee, includes, I think, three different studies. Unfortunately, none of them will be done, oh gosh, until 2025 or even after, to really seriously take a look at how we fund education in the state of Vermont, what we can do to start over if we need to. You know, there's people that will advance the notion that we should have an income tax base for our programs for education instead of the property tax. And there's pros and cons to that argument, I'm sure. But I think there'll be some serious deliberations going on in the next twelve, eighteen months that just open this whole thing up and say, look, we can't keep going the way we are. Here's what most people tell me, okay? And I hate to put it in such sort of blunt terms. We have fewer kids. We have about 83,000 kids in the educational system in 2020. I think it's slowly even getting near 80,000 kids. We have increased costs, there's no doubt about that. And then, you can argue about test scores, whether they're getting better or worse. But most people will say, geez, that's really not a good model for a business or an educational system. Why would we have fewer kids costing more money to educate but not getting the same results or even less results than we had before? So, that's one of those things that I think people that are a lot smarter than me are going to have to sit down and figure out. But at the same time, we have to move forward. Enough already, and let's get this thing done and move on.
Thank you, Brian.
Tina, I'd like to-
Yep.
Sure, go ahead, Linda.
Hi, thank you for having this gathering and getting different viewpoints. And I should let you know that I'm a teacher and a parent, and a taxpayer in Rutland Town, of course. And I know there's so many factors that are affecting our budget. But we have to remember that it's a public school. We educate the public. So, the school is really reflecting what is happening in the world around us with poverty and anxiety with students. And I would just hope that the board would address the whole child because you have to address the academics first, of course, because that's why we're hired. But then, you have a person there with all sorts of needs, physical, social, emotional. And they can only work well if you address their social and emotional needs. So, as you're creating the budget, I hope that you keep that in mind.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Colin, did you want to?
Yeah, you want to pull it up?
I just have the PDFs off to scroll through, as you go.
So, this is actually slightly outdated, given what the news we just heard from Senator Colmore, which is actually good news for us. So, I just kind of wanted to walk through. And Louis, Louis has done a lot of it, but what's impacting, how do they come up with this crazy calculation? What does it mean with the budget we proposed and just got shot down? So, we look at FY '22, that's the budget we're in. The budget we passed last year was total expense of 9.9 million. Education spending that we need to raise without any local, any other income coming in is 9.6 million. As of last year, the equalized pupil count was 52633, 36. That means our ed spending per kid was 18,244. Important to note that that's not our pupil count, that's our equalized pupil count, the one that Act 60 created. That's not exactly how many kids we have, that's the formula that says how many kids we have. And that's what we're spending. Now, the property yield, which you just told us, comes out, and they come up with the property tax yield after everyone's passed their budgets. Because essentially, Montpelier sees all the budgets passed, this is the money we need to spend in the state, and then, they're going to see what's coming in and how we're going to jockey who's paying for it. And that, in turn, turns into the gold towns and the not gold towns. It's essentially them saying how much money we have raised and how much money we need to raise to send to all these schools. And that's how they start jockeying around with formulas to figure out who's going to pay for it. It's not just, we want to spend a hundred grand, we're going to raise a hundred grand around town. It's what did everyone else do around the state? And then, the yield comes back and impacts our equalized tax rate. So, that essentially, we're spending 18,244 per kid, per equalized kid. They come up with a property tax yield of 15,479. Your equalized tax rate is 1.1787. Now, we have to factor in, what's your level of common level assessment? You guys, if we had an appraisal recently and we were all sitting with an appraisal close to market value, that would be a hundred. And if it's a hundred percent, meaning you've assessed your properties pretty close to what the market values are, then our equalized tax rate would equal our tax rate, and you'd begin to charge 1.17 per thousand dollars of property tax. But last year, we were deemed to be at eighty-four percent, which levers up the taxes and the tax rate. So, last year, per hundred thousand, you were going to, if you had a hundred thousand dollar house, you were paying $1,396 per hundred grand. So, that was our tax rate as of last year. Budget we just tried to pass in the most recent vote was up from 9.6 million, we need to raise 10.3. Seven point eight seven percent difference. However, we have a new act this year. So, yay for us. Our equalized student count jumped from 529, 526 to 769 because they changed the formula. Other districts, again, with more secondary English speakers, with more poverty, they saw their equalized pupil counts jump even higher because of how the formula works. So, now magically, we're spending 13,463 per student. Looks like we saved five grand per kid, but we didn't. Looks like we saved five grand per kid, but we didn't because, again, the per pupil count has changed. Add in the property tax yield, which Mr. Collmore just told us is actually not 9769, which is what we were guestimating at, but if it's coming out at $10,005, I believe he said, or did he say 50?
I think 10,005.
10,005. It's actually going to adjust that 137 number down to, um, 135. So a higher tax yield is better for us because it's going to drive down the formula. So now our new, what we're trying to pass or we tried to pass, our new equalized tax rate was 137, up 16.92%. However, this year, they're giving us a 17, because Rutland Town, after they created Act 128, they didn't do any financial modeling with it. Now we come up to people starting to try to pass budgets. They do the modeling and they figure out there's 10 or 15 towns like us, they got absolutely smashed in the face with the new calculations. So we were one of the hardest hit in the state. So they came up with a few renditions of how they're going to help soften the blow for us. This is what they came up with. We were 17% affected. They're going to give us a 17 cent discount this year on our, on our past tax rate. Now, next year, as Louis alluded to, this is going to phase out. So next year, it's going to be 80% of 17 cents. The year after that, it's going to be 60%. And until five years in the future, we're getting no discount. But taking all that into fact, and again, this is 135, not 137 on paper, our equalized tax rate is now 120. However, COVID, I think markets been good to us. This is our common level assessment. Property values, according to their assessed value, are way above. So we're, we're a common level assessment, 75%. So our new adjusted tax rate would be 1.6. So instead of paying $1,396 per 100,000, we're proposing, uh, your base rate's going to jump up by like $200 per 100. So, next slide.
That did change too, right, with the new yield?
Came down, yeah. So the new yield helps us. The higher the yield, the lower our tax rate's going to go. So I said, okay, what does that mean for a property taxpayer? This is, this is my, my house. I'm assessed at 305,000. 2024 rate, 1.3998. My current tax bill is $4,269.39. There's a state tax credit in this, in Vermont where your house, on a sliding property value and income scale, you can get a rebate. So I don't, I don't get that. My new base rate, or that we're proposing, this number's actually now 155 because the yield just changed. But I'll keep it for, in estimated purposes, so you guys can see it. So the changes that I proposed and I tried to pass would cost me 615 extra dollars per year. My new tax bill out of 160 would be 48, 85, 19, or $51 more per month. That's what effectively that changed for me. And actually, that number's actually lower now because the yield's higher. Next slide. So we're also concerned, as we're fiduciaries of helping educate kids as well as property taxpayers in this, in this town. So again, that, that income sensitivity scale matters too for a lot of our, maybe retirees, people on fixed income budgets. So take a hypothetical property value of 275 in Rutland Town and a household income of 85,000. And I believe the median income for a two-house hold, two, two adults, two kids is roughly 68,000, Matt? Was that in there?
Wow, since I looked it up.
Be a sense of that, 68,000, Matt? We're just blowing that out of the water. We're just going to say, okay, here's your, your $85,000 income level, $275,000 home in Rutland Town. Last year, you had the same property tax rate of 1.399. So your property tax bill you're getting handed from the town is $3,849. However, because after you do your taxes, you file your homestead claim, you do your property tax credit rebate, this particular household is going to get a rebate of, and got a rebate last year, of $2,082. So their net tax they're actually owing is 1,767. If someone with income of over $128,000 lives in that house, they get no rebate. But if you're below $128,000, you get some income sensitivity. If you're below 90, you get the full whack. There's a phase out between 90 and 128 grand. Fast forward to what we're trying to pass, before we're talking about cuts tonight. Again, the 2025 rate, 1.6 versus the 1.39. Your new tax bill is 4,400, roughly $500 higher. That sucks. However, your new rebate, going through the formulas, using the state's tax refunds, their new rebate is going to be 2637. So their new tax bill is 1,767. Even though we had a significant jump in 16.72% in our tax base, this particular person got a raise in their tax bill of 23 cents. That's the value of income sensitivity in Vermont and what it means for some of our fixed income folks in this town, that there's help. So they're not, they're not bearing the brunt of this tax raise rate. So your property tax value and your, and your stated income level and your tax return makes a difference. We try to keep all this in mind as we're figuring out how much we can appropriately spend for our students. And that's what we did. But we, we start the budget process with, we go to our administration, we go to our teachers. We say, what do you guys need to educate these kids? That is something we do have control over. I know we're going to talk a lot about, what we don't have control over is what the state's doing. But we do have the ability to educate our kids correctly. We hire these, we hire our teachers, we hire our staff to do a tremendous job. We have the ability to pass a budget, maybe take a beating from the state, but we still have control of this town. And we still have control over what we want to not take away from them when we start looking at the budget process. We're also an employer. As a property taxpayer in the state, you're one of the biggest employers in the state. These are teachers. These are people who put money back into our economy. If you try to put your house up for sale right now, it's probably going to get a nice premium over what you paid for it or what the market will bear because we have parents desperately trying to get here to educate their children here. So as bad as we think Rutland Town is, people are dying to get here for the education. They understand it's expensive, but that's what we have. And we can always reference that Vermont's got the second, third, or fourth highest property taxes for education. But we also rank in the top four for education. So there, there's a product that comes with paying for it. And it, it sucks to see prices go up. But when we're an employer too, we want to see that our staff is getting those cost of living increases. So what you would expect over time, that the, the funding mechanism, which is your property taxes, would go up. We have it really nice on the municipal side here because we have some outside forces with sales tax that can raise and offset our municipal taxes. We don't have that when it comes to educational spending. And we're also thrown into the pot, we're educating not just our Rutland Town students, but every single kid in Vermont. Matt?
I just want to say that was incredibly helpful. And if Roland Harald is listening, I think they would do the readers a great service if they would print everything you just said with those examples.
Yeah, and you can go on, and you can go on, and I, I don't know if I referenced it here, but you can go on and use the calculator to find out what your credit rebate is. You can play around with the tax rates, which is what I did. So this is all data that's published. You can go in, you can look up your property tax bill, jab in your income and see where your rebates are. But also see, am I getting any help? And that's what I kind of wanted to show. It's like, okay, what does it mean to someone at home? Now, these numbers are actually a little bit higher for me and everyone else who's not getting subsidies because that tax yield is up. So when I, we're actually looking at about a buck 55 versus a dollar 60 on the original budget that just failed. So that's just a frame of reference for folks. I want to get that out on our Facebook, on the website, so people can actually see, what does it mean when we start talking about, do I want to pass this budget or not? What does it mean to my wallet?
Well, I'd like to echo what he said about your comments. And that example that you have up there, Colin, I know Brian said, well, we don't want to get into politics. But I don't think it's politics. It's just what's happening up there. When they look at the formula, the example you just gave shows all of the positives of going to an income-based funding for education. It's right there in front of your eyes. If you don't have income, you can't pay for anything. So the people that have less income get a rebate. Why not go all the way to income? You can do whatever kind of progressive tax system that you want to do incrementally. The rich pay more because if you did a standard percentage, the more money they made, the more money they would pay. The less you make, the less you pay. It's not brain surgery to raise what's needed. And the state knows what's needed to fund the whole of education. You could do an income-based formula very easily, very easily.
This is their, this is their attempt in Act 60 to do the income sensitivity. And to be, to be fair, I mean, most, I'm not picking on the room, but most older folks are living on fixed incomes, you're not, in your, your earning years. And that's, that's the hopefully target they can help soften the blow. You're on a fixed income that doesn't get a step up. So how can you keep up with property taxes? Other states do it differently. They actually cap on your age. So you're 70, you're going to cap. So that way, you're, you're not, we're not in these constant battles of, you know, old versus young, people with or without kids to say, you know, I'd love to vote for these kids, but I can't afford it. Where we got to come up with some solutions that, that help the folks that, that can't versus the, the people that can't.
But you have a voice. This board has a strong voice. With all of the givens that you have up there of the excellence of the system, you have a voice with the Vermont School Boards Association to be pushing solutions like that that would help not only us, but the whole state. And if you speak with a loud voice, you will be listened to. If you don't say anything, then you have no input.
Walk with a big stick. And I think what's important, not that I want to go off task on the legislation, is that no, no educator is sitting up there making these decisions. They're not asking our superintendents what they think. They're not educators. They're obviously not financial people. But that's, it's your legislators that, that are not in the trenches to say, what does these, you know, what, what do schools need? What do we need to be providing our children? It's arbitrary people making decisions and then the aftermath is blowing up in our face. And it's turning communities against each other versus working together. We're all on the same page. We all want to make sure the school is as best as it's ever been. And we shouldn't be fighting with each other. We should certainly have a loud voice with a big stick up there. But unfortunately, we can't fix those issues in this room tonight. We can talk about a budget, what's appropriate, what we want to provide for this community. And that's important. And what we want to have pride, we want, we want to have pride in the school. We want to have things that I didn't. I want these kids to be smarter than me. And that's what we have control over. And it's going to unfortunately cost me a bit of money, but my parents sacrificed. So that's what, that's why I'm standing at the till here. That's my two cents.
This income sensitivity, what happens when the assessment drops to 200,000, but the income remains at your 85,000? How much does that rebate go down?
So you can go in there and actually, again, the calculator's got it all in there. You can put property values. So, I'm just speaking off my mind, like if you make under 90,000, if your house is worth 225 or less, or, no, excuse me, under 90,000.
Under 90,000.
There you go. Under 100, 90,000 income, 400,000. So it doesn't matter. If your house is under 400,000, you're going to get the full wave of the, the income sensitivity. Now, if it's above that, you're only getting a portion of it because they're not going to give you. If you have a million dollar house and you have no income, they're not going to give you the full tax. If you're, if you're between 128 and 90, it's like a 225 cutoff. So you still get some of the benefits of the income sensitivity, but you're only going to get it up to $225,000 assessed value. So again, if you're at 300,000, 75% of your tax rate's not going to get a credit. But again, and I'll put the link on there too. You can go click and play around with the figures however you like. Or what's probably most imprudent is stick your numbers in there and you can find out how it affects you.
And where does that rebate come from? That comes from other funding in the state? Like 2% of the sales tax on a car and all this other stuff that?
In theory.
And other taxpayers who are paying the full amount.
So, so how, part of the bill was to re-equitize and how, how we're reviewing kids and how we're educating and spreading the wealth. The other was how do we come up with the 18% hole we have in the ed budget that we overspent for the last 10 years?
Well, having folded the tax bills last year, there is quite a disparity in, in that. There's some houses that pay them big tax bills.
Correct. But that's part of the funding too, is this is the aftermath of, okay, we need $100 million to, to fund all of our schools. But then we bring in the income sensitivity sliding scale and we can only raise 80, 80 million. So where's the 20 come from?
Well, we get full credit, we get full credit for that top line.
Correct.
That other 2,000 rebate comes out from other individuals.
Presumably, yes. It's, it's coming from somewhere.
Well, it's coming from Colin and those examples, right?
No, 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 no. No, it's that 2% that, that they allocated, 2% of your new car, your 6% sales tax on cars, 2% goes to education.
And again, some of it's coming from the non-homestead rate too. They're whacking the stick there.
That's right. Keep up the good work.
Can we hear a little bit about what your ideas are, what budget you'll be proposing, what your timing is?
Thank you. That was coming up next.
Excellent.
Louis?
So do you want me to share that Google Doc that I put in the drive?
Sure.
Okay.
And before you start talking, I just want to preface this with, the board has not gone together to discuss any types of cuts yet. These are just some ideas, so drafts. Go ahead, Louis.
Okay, so the top section, these are the cuts that were made after the first budget was voted down. So we reduced the budget by $89,600 in, in expense. So we cut the homework club, which was $4,600. And that was replaced by the Boys and Girls Club. We cut legal fees for $5,000. And that was an expense that was needed for, if the bond had passed. So since that didn't pass, we were able to take that out. We had some savings for someone who was, or employees that was retiring. So they were able to, to utilize that based on replacing that position with somebody that's lower down on the scale. We reduced lifetime sports by 5,000. But that was replaced by an increase in student fees, which Tina talked about earlier, to help support students who can't afford to pay for field trips. We, we removed the second, the seventh grade trip for $20,000. And our plan was to, to look for funding elsewhere through grants or other donations or funding. We reduced the furniture line by $10,000. And we reduced the fuel oil by another 10,000, by 10,000 as well. And that, that line we had increased by $25,000 to begin with for the, for the original budget to help meet the needs of the increase in, in fuel oil prices over the last year. So we took another look at that and we could, we reduced that by 10,000. And we're a little bit less conservative with our revote. So those are the, the cuts that went into the, the last budget that you voted for. The lines below that are items for the board to consider tonight for the revote. So the administration met and we, we discussed these items and we broke them into three different levels based on which we, which items we feel would have the least impact on students. So the first level, level one, includes lifetime sports, 25,000, removing both the lifetime sports, the remaining 20,000 plus the 5,000 in student fees. This doesn't necessarily be, mean removing the program, but just removing the funding and looking for funding elsewhere, similar to the seventh grade trip, through either grants, donations, parent, parent, a parent pacing, sliding scale, something like that. Removing the kindergarten pair, which was an addition to the FY25 budget. So these two items, the top two items, removes the remaining additions that were in the FY25 budgets, which were ads. And then the last item was planned operations, $35,000. And this is something that came about after the original budget was approved. But the, the staffing model was changed this year where we had, instead of having a certain number of full-time staff, we have a certain number of part-time staff in addition to full-time staff. And that's resulting in some benefit savings. So this allows us to reduce the bud, planned operations budget without, this is not impacting our staffing number. It's just the savings that are in there because of the model that has changed. So that, those total 105,000, which is approximately a 1% in new cuts, in addition to the approximately 1% in previous cuts, so 2% total cuts since the original budget. Tina, do you want to talk about this by level? Or do you want me to go through it all and then open it up for conversation?
Why don't you go through it all and then we can open up conversation?
Okay.
Thanks.
So level, level two, this would be everything that's in level one plus the following items. So we would cut athletic transportation, $9,000. Cut the SRO position, which is $62,000. Remove summer school for $4,400. Cut co-curricular, this would be field trips as well as any clubs, school time clubs that are, that run during the school day or outside the school day. That would be 15,000. Cut one bus, so that would mean going from five buses to four buses. This would involve doing some rerouting of our, of our, our five- four buses. This would involve doing some rerouting of our five buses, maybe making some adjustments to eliminating pickup for any, any parents that live within a certain distance from the school. For example, you can say, okay, we're not going to do any pickups within a half a mile of the school, or something like that. So that's something that would need to be really looked at with our transportation coordinator, reviewed, and kind of come up with a plan. Reduce our counselor position by a .2 FTE, which would be a savings of 15,000. This was actually something that's already going into place, at least temporarily, for the next two years. So this would remove those, remove that out of the budget. And then cut technology budget by 20,000. That's approximately about 40% of the technology budget. And then reduce all supplies, dues, and other discretionary spending by 20%, which would be approximately a 20,000 cut. So those items total 305,000. So combined with Level 1, that would be a total of 3% in new cuts. And then the last level, Level 3, and as you can see, our goal was to kind of get different percentage levels to see really what the board felt, what the next steps were. And so our targets were 1%, 3%, and 5%. So Level 3 is everything in Level 1 and 2, plus two additional items. And that would be reduce from one, from two pre-k classrooms to one pre-k classroom, and look to shift the pre-k from a full day to a half day, so we can still serve the same amount of children, but it would just be a half-day preschool program. That would have a reduction of 186,000. And the last item would be the cut athletics, and that would be approximately 34,000. So that total for all three levels comes to 525,000, which is approximately 5% in new cuts, or total of 6% with the original cuts from the first budget.
Louis, could you just explain one more time the counselor full-time reduction? Did you say that that was something that was in the works already? I'm sorry.
Yes, perhaps is that something maybe Sarah or Chris want to touch on?
Sarah, you on the call? If not, I can explain that if you'd like.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, so our current guidance counselor has asked due to childcare needs for pickup and drop-off of own children to amend her contract. So we have moved forward and done that for next year.
I thought that there was some statute that requires a certain amount of guidance for middle school and elementary students. Is that true? Will we still be able to cover that?
I would have to double-check with Chris on that.
I'm not aware of any such guidelines or restraint. There may be, maybe recommendations, but no.
Pretty sure, pretty sure there's a statute, if you have more than 300 kids, you have to have one full-time counselor.
Yes.
I've read.
Schools with fewer than 300 students have to have a full-time school counselor, and a .8 would still qualify as a full-time school counselor.
Right.
Yes.
And we have other positions in the guidance department as well. So we have a homeschool coordinator, which probably would count as well.
Louis, has the board, or have you calculated any reductions in the supervisory union budget, of which we would obviously share whatever percentage contribution we have to that budget?
So the GRCSU budget has not officially been reopened, and that would have to be an SU board decision, since Rotten Town is only one of the districts that feed into that. However, at the, I think it was the March Board meeting, there was some staffing proposal that was presented to reduce two staff members, which is going to result in a 75,000 in savings to the SU budget for FY25, as well as FY24. These were positions that had been open, and we've been trying to fill, and were not, unable to find qualified individuals. So we did some restructuring of the departments and decided not to fill those positions. And so that is resulting in a 70, like I said, 75,000 in savings at the SU level. A majority of the SU budget is coming from special ed. That's where the biggest, the bigger assessment is coming from. And a lot of that is regulated by federal law and guidelines, as far as IEPs and what's required.
Chris, how many personnel do you have total in the SU?
I have to look that up. So Louis, do you know that offhand, total personnel, there are SU employees?
That's really a tough question to answer, because there's many employees that are considered SU employees but are working in schools, whether they're grant-funded or not. If you look at strictly just SU employees that are at the central office on a daily basis, that are, that are not working in schools, there is about seven in the business office, there's one in the curriculum department, two in the superintendent's office, and four, five in the technology department. So what's that, 12?
15.
13, 14, 15?
And Donald, say that during, I think what a lot of school districts or supervisory unions were doing, they're looking to add positions at the SU level or at the central office position. And we were actually very aware of not adding positions. And so when you really look at our SU through the central office, we are probably, you know, lower, lower numbers in terms of staffing, as opposed to other districts and supervisory unions. We don't have a director of equity. We don't have a director of curriculum. We have, actually have a lot of our central office admins wear many hats, that we have not farmed these positions off to other people. So we've tried to be very aware of the impact, not just on the SU, but on our local districts. So.
So those, those personnel that are not in the central office, that are in the school districts, are they, they're all required by some federal statute, or whatever?
Well, it just, a lot of our SU-based employees are on special education, so if, you know, it's IEP-driven, then yes, that'd be something we'd have to provide for schools or the students. So I have to look at, I mean, it really is on a case-by-case basis. I had to take a look at specific scenarios.
All right. So the ones that I listed, the 15 staff members, those are, those are what's feeding into that central office administration. And it's the, it's those four or five departments. So it's the curriculum department, superintendent's office, business office, and technology. So those four departments, that 15, everybody else, for the most part, is either special ed funded or some sort of other grant funding. Like, we have a tooth tutor that goes into the buildings, and that's funded through a state grant, through, it's called the MAC Grant. And they go in and teach dental health. And we have a Medicaid clerk that's, works on getting Medicaid reimbursement, and that position pays for itself. So there's, these other positions that are funded through other revenue sources, not local school budgets. And they're each, they're each fulfilling a goal or a target based on either a state law, or a regulation, or a need. And some of them are self-generate, generate their own revenue to fund those positions, or other, other special grants that we receive to fund those positions.
I guess I was looking for the same 6% reduction that if the school board followed Level 1, 2, and 3, and decided on all those cuts, that would, that would be a 6% reduction in the budget. Because I was looking for the same reduction in the supervisory union.
I do, I got a question, since I kind of know where you stand on this vote, right? So we do everything that appeases you. How many yes votes do we lose by cutting this? Because we're only, we're only off by 30 votes, and you're making it seem it's like an 80-20 split on, as far as the community goes.
Well, I'm not, I'm not in favor of.
What's that? Well, now you're playing vote games. The issue is that the people need to see a reduction in this budget. And I understand you guys as a school board are limited to what you can control, and that's understandable. But you have to start looking outside, too, which we're on this supervisory union track. There's a lot of baggage that comes with that supervisory union. And there's a lot of administrative staff that, yeah, I'm sure they have a role, but there's a lot of spending there that doesn't directly educate children. So it's something that as a school board, you got to look towards. I know we're required to be there, but maybe you need to start leaning on the supervisory union to get their budget down as well.
My answer to your question, quite simply, if you're going to look at the politics of it, and that's what this is, everybody says, whoa, we don't want to talk about politics. Politics is what drove us to be here. We just failed the budget. We got a 50, basically a 50-50 split in the people of this town that voted for and against. And I'm just telling you that there needs to be cuts, but when you look at where, it becomes political. If you cut the SRO officer, you will lose your third vote, I will guarantee.
Can you speak to which of those items that you support or would not support in cutting?
Well, Matt, I mean, that's kind of what I'm looking for. Like, you know, we've been working on this budget since July. I felt very confident going in. The Act 127, throw a curveball, you know? And we didn't, you know, we didn't change a whole lot. And when you, when you talk about, like, we got a thing outside the box, it's much bigger than this, in my opinion. You know, you talk about Vermont spending, it was like, like, Vermont is one of the highest spenders, but we also have, like, the lowest GDP in the country. And we're in like the bottom 10 in GDP per capita. So would we even be here if we weren't trying to move the needle in a much broader scope? I mean, that's where the struggle is for me. Like, I, we sat here for months now, and I feel like this is what's going to deliver for the community, right? And when you, you got to think about it, like, I was at this comedian, right? And he's like, oh, I went to a community college. And they were, he's like, what did I take that as? Oh, I'm staying in this community. Right? So, and we're going to have plenty of kids that are going to go to college, graduate, get their masters, do whatever. We're going to have kids that stay in this community. And what we are trying to deliver as a product is good citizens that are going to keep Rotten Town what it is. And I didn't even, you know, I didn't grow up here, you know, I met my wife and moved here. But like, you know, I have pride in this town. And, and like, I'm watching two kids pick up trash on the side of East Pittsburgh Road the other day, Rotten Town students. Like, I mean, we got to get in it here, you know, as a community. And so, I mean, cuts are the easy answer, for sure. You know, I don't, I don't think it's going to stop the bleeding in the grand scheme. So that's where my passion is, my frustration lies.
I think what you have to do is, you have to let those feelings that you have, which you've just expressed, play out as best as possible in a budget that preserves the quality of your educators, and yet causes a little bit of pain everywhere. Because this thing is going to increase in the next 43 years, as was explained. And then we're going to get the full brunt of that sea change in Montpelier, unless things change in Montpelier. So, do I want to see staff gone? No, I don't want to see staff gone. But if you can do things with program by getting some extra funding, then yes, you could do, you could do without some of these extra programs on a temporary basis, in order to meet a political need that you have, and that's what it is, to let the people know that you're willing to let everybody bear a little bit of the pain.
So what?
It shouldn't fall all in one place. And it definitely shouldn't affect the safety and well-being of students, which is why we need an SRO in this building. That's what the position was created for. And fortunately for us, it hasn't been needed. We should hope it's never needed, and we don't have.
Can we just get back to what you listed here?
Pardon me?
Didn't we just budget for another police officer at the town level, and if the town believes we need an SRO, is that something that could fall on their laps?
Well, the school board's got to believe it.
There's only handful of things that we can pay for out of the town?
No, the school board has got to believe that we need it. And shifting costs from the school to the town side is no savings and no benefit.
There is no savings.
There's no benefit.
You don't get back with the CLA. If we raise a dollar on the municipal side, it doesn't cost as much as if we raised a dollar on the educational side, because the math's against us. If we pay for something out of the municipal budget, it is cheaper. We do not get divided by 75% CLA. Now, we can't pay for everything out of the municipal budget because Act 60 prohibits educational spending, but there are certain things we could look at.
Well, also, the 1% option tax also prohibits spending on school activities. That 1%, which is a million and a half now for our general budget, must be expended on municipal services, not school services by law.
Abby, you have something to say?
My question is what Matt said. If you look at this list, besides you've made it very clear that cut the SRO, what else do you want to cut? Because I'm sitting here looking at numbers. We have 310 students. That's 88% of our students who ride buses now. So we're going to, that's going to, kids are going to take a huge hit there. You cut sports programs, that's almost 30% of our students participate in, in sports here. 37% of our students participate in band. We have in-between chorus and extralegtheater, that's another, almost 20%. So we're sitting here looking at all these costs, and the only kids that are going to, the only people who are going to really get hit with pulling out or taking, cutting this budget even further is going to be our students. And to be honest with you, that, that's, I think, worse than sitting here. We, we've made a statement. We've made a statement two times already. There's, we can't, besides going up and storming and sitting on the Capitol steps, we can't change what they're doing up there. But what it's coming down to is now we're coming to affect the education. And Ms. Lyndon Mullen said it perfectly. We are not only educating our students, but if you look at pulling sports away from students, their likelihood of graduation, in some cases, significantly decre, decreases. They drop out. We, higher dropout rates. You, we're setting kids up for failure when we pull extracurriculars and stuff from them. I think, I think we need to look at that, and we need to look at what we are going to do to children in this building. It's not just, it's not about egos here, it's not about anything. It's about the kids. It's about the 352 students that we service on a daily basis.
Back in the day, those 300.
But we're not, we're not back in the day. We're 2012 back in the day now.
No, no. But what I'm saying is, there was a board that made a conscious decision to eliminate the home ec and industrial arts program, and that program.
You know what? This board is fighting to get that back, but we can't. Because of, we're trying to. We've been, we are looking at that kind of stuff. But if you continue to, if we continue to pull those things, we've seen it. Back in the day, when they pulled it, they couldn't get boards to be, put it back on there. Once you lose it, you can't get it back on. It's, it is, it is. So we cut, we cut the music program or the sports program now, these kids are never going to get it back. And then you have to look at who you are affecting. It's not the adults now. It's not the adults that we're, we're affecting, or it's not the taxpayers we're affecting. It is the students themselves that is, it's going to be a detrimental impact to the students.
Abby, I'll come to you next, but Matt has his hand up.
So I had a couple of clarifying questions, because I can't quite see the list. And then a big picture question. So, on the busing piece, I think you said you were, on one of those items, you had a reduction, but you're not cutting, you didn't have a complete cut to school busing on that.
No, no.
It was just athletic busing.
But that, so what it would do is if we eliminated. But that, so what it would do is if we eliminated to one bus, that would put seventy-seven kids on, on each bus.
Yeah, okay.
Just think about that.
Yeah, I'd rather not.
From where to go, on the roof?
That's what I'm talking about, but if you want us to cut the bus, you want us to cut it one, that's like four kids to a seat.
So then, um, so you mentioned music, was, is music actually on the list?
Well, I didn't know if that was in co-curriculars, so I was worried, I wanted just to bring it up.
That'd be my clarifying question, what is?
Co-curriculars is field trips, so it would be taking out all field trip, um, money, funding.
So right now, music is not on the list?
I don't see music on the list.
Well, that's good.
Certainly good for, for me.
Music, it hasn't really been funded much by the school, but we have gotten, like, two thousand dollar grants, like, in the past, but it's been very sporadic, but I don't think it's on there.
But it is a staff...
It's mostly funded by friends of music, which is unfortunate, that it's not something that the school supported, but we have to have it.
Music's mandatory, so we can't cut music, you see?
I'm just saying, what I was just saying in my numbers was, the amount of kids that we have doing all these extracurriculars, all these things, who are going to be impacted other than that, I'm ju- yeah.
So now, so my big picture question, I came to, I think, five hundred and something, if you cut every single one of those. If you do that, if I'm not mistaken, taxes are still going up, right? So for, and I don't know if you have an example to crunch those numbers, uh, but, you know, for my, there are some things, you know, I could probably live with on that list, but to me, it's just not even worth it. And I don't know if that is enough even to make anybody who's been voting no vote yes. And if there's anybody here who wants to speak to that, I'd be interested to hear. What, you know, is that enough? Or are there things on there that you, that you don't want? But, you know, to me, it doesn't make sense to, to get all those things and probably, you know, not make a difference in this situation, which is, you know, these are all the things that we have discretion over, and, and, and that's, that's basically it. There is still...
You have a lot of people that six to seven hundred dollars increase in one year, in a town that has a very reasonable tax rate, had a very reasonable tax rate, that is sticker shock to a lot of people.
If, if they're actually, I don't disagree with you, Don, but as Colin illustrated, you know, it depends on every specific situation.
Correct.
Um, for me, you know, my situation would be similar to Colin's, and, you know, I don't like it either, but it's the price I'm willing to pay. I don't, I, you know, I'm just one vote, so.
And I just wanna reference back to, you know, we talked a lot about what we don't have control over, what we do have control over, and this is very specific on how they created the system here, is that they, they give you the appearance of local control, but we have the low-hanging fruit. But that low-hanging fruit is this school, that is the backbone. I promise you, there's great teachers in every town in this, in this state, not just here. They're, they're teaching the same exact curriculum. What Rutland Town offers, it gives us the best reputation, why people are moving here, is this little stuff. The impact of a twenty thousand dollar lifetime source, that's fifty-six dollars per kid. The impact that has is significant through their lifetime. The impact of having busing, I mean, to your property taxes, we're having, and everyone bitches that we don't have young people in Vermont, well, the young people we want to come back are working parents, so they got two people adding to the economy, they have children, what are they going to look for? There's not industry, so they're gonna displace themselves in a town that's got a good school. If we start nickel and diming and eroding what we have here, they can easily look to move somewhere else. And we have the same cycle of problem. We want these people here, we want people with children that are adding to our economy, and they want that stuff. That's what makes the school great. That's why people are paying, leaving the city to come here to pay probably over their heads for a house, understanding that the property taxes are going up, but also realizing that they don't have to spend seven, eight thousand dollars to send their kid to Christ the King, 'cause that's what a lot of people are doing, if we're gonna talk realistic, what's going on out there. So we're trying to have a balance, but to Matt's point, you know, moving the dial, five hundred and twenty-five thousand's roughly a five percent cut, you know, we're still gonna have a seven percent, or seven cent tax raise with all that, and that's, that's significantly cutting all we got.
And you could cut the whole thing. We could cut, we could close the school down. Guess what? It'll cost us more money if we send our kids to the state.
So we shut the school down, and we tuition our kids to Rutland, that creates a cost of ten point two million dollars, straight up cost, before we talk about special education reimbursement, which would be on the hook for another million or two. So we'd be looking at a fourteen million dollar budget if we shut it down. So arguably, and I'm not bad-mouthing anybody in any community around us, but I think we educate these kids better here, and we're doing it cheaper. We have no control over the state formula. Do we want to take, to take away from what we have created, what it means to be a Rutland Town student, and what we're giving them on their next level up? Now, there's all, some things we have in the works for maybe the future to talk about tackling that secondary education, we're getting whacked, you know, school choice, but that's also a reason people come here, they have school choice, they want school choice, they're paying up for properties, they're paying the property tax, but we have no negotiation sitting at Rutland City, 'cause a majority of our kids are going there. Can we get to the table? And they're charging us twenty-three thousand dollars per kid. They're publishing to the state that it's eleven thousand per pupil, that's their equalized pupil count. So why don't we get that rate? We can find some savings, it's not gonna happen, I promise you, it's not gonna happen before July first, but there's things that we can do that make sense, but we don't have the time right now, we got smashed with this in the face. So do we wanna sit here and nickel and dime the school down to not what it is supposed to be? Or do we wanna keep what we have? And again, I tried to put the numbers up there to show what it means, and, and it's, I'm gonna suffer, but my parents suffered for me. I got my one kid over there, I got my other two kids up and, at a hospital appointment tomorrow, so Ace is over here, that's why I'm here. And that's what, that's what the administration told us they need. So we didn't just say, hey, let's add a bunch more stuff, let's, let's throw a Ferrari in, like, that's what we need. So do we wanna talk about having Rutland Town school, or do we wanna talk about having a school, and just bare minimum funding it, and let's just roll the dice and see what happens to these kids? These enrichment programs are massive, and it's not a lot of dollars.
Abby?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so I just wanted to say that I really agree with some of the things that Abby and Colin are saying, thank you so much. Um, I know this is a really hard situation in general, and there's a lot that goes into this, but I'm just looking at a lot of things that I know impact our kids, and I've been teaching there for eleven years, and at least in the past three, our supplies haven't increased, and I know that that's helped the school. But that's something that directly impacts kids and that your teachers are compensating for. So I see supplies on this list, and, you know, that's one of many things I could mention. But I just, you know, it breaks my heart, because I know that we're gonna do whatever we could possibly do for these kids, because we love them and we love this community, and we're gonna keep doing that. But this is just gonna have such a huge impact, and I just had to share that, because, you know, we all know that the cost of everything is going up, and our budgets for supplies aren't, and they haven't in years. You know, I'm not at school, I'm on maternity leave, so I can't tell you how many years, but I can tell you at least three. And again, I'm not saying that's a problem, I'm thankful that we have what we have, but if it goes down, that's a problem, and it's a problem for our kids.
Thank you, Abby.
I'm just back to the timing. What, what were you hoping to accomplish tonight? Is the school board, board gonna make decisions tonight? Or is this a listening session from us? And then, when are you planning to go out for a revote? Are you planning for a revote?
Well, we haven't discussed that yet. I think we were seeing where, you know, how the room felt today.
So, to be clear, we are going back to vote, we have to. So there's no magical date where this disappears. We have to, we have to pass a budget. It doesn't, that, there's, there's rumors out there that July first passes, we go to eighty-seven percent of last year. We have to pass a budget, period. Now, logistically speaking, July first hits, we don't have a budget, they're gonna arbitrarily set our tax rate at one dollar, and that goes out on the property tax bills, because we have to have property tax bills. We can then borrow up to eighty-seven percent of last year's budget, um, but the, the payments from the state come out in three, free realms. We went over this, Louis, and I don't know if you've gone through this yet, but what they're proposing, uh, there was a bill out there to propose that we default back to last year's, um, budget in the interim, that's gone, that failed, or that got thrown out. But from my understanding, the payments come to the school via September tenth, December tenth, April something, April tenth. Now, what they, they stated is that we will get one, usually it's a third, a third, a third, they've stated they'll give us a quarter of the average per pupil spend for our per pupil count, which is roughly thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. So that's the mechanism, we have to pass a budget, there's no magic date. If we don't have a budget passed by thirty days before the first distribution, which would be August tenth, then we're gonna get a quarter of the per pupil spend for our equalized pupil count. But we have to keep going. We don't default to anything, this town needs to pass a budget.
So ideally, we would like to have a pass budget by July first, so that we don't run into that problem. And we would like to, I believe, get this out as soon as possible, so that if it does not pass again, we have another shot at it before July first. So probably by the end of the month, we'd like that go out for a revote.
But I think that's the help I'm looking for right now, is, you know, we're coming to the beginning of all these meetings, and the first thirty minutes is, and to all your points, there's maybe seven people that understand this funding mechanism, is that how can we explain that the best to the public? As we know, there's still only, like, twenty of you here. And people gotta understand how it works, what we can control, and I think we've gone through that, and everyone here gets it, that what, what we're looking at cutting. But I, we need the community to understand that these, especially the, the no voters that are making a point to Montpelier, and that's fine, but it's not, it's tragically impacting us here, and, and again, we can't make those changes. So how do we get to them? 'Cause they're not here, we've warned this to everybody, and I've seen the same faces at these meetings, how do we, how do we get that to them? How do we message that? So we have, to Don's point, why we tried the, not us, but why we tried the mail-out, we still, we had a hundred and fifty more people show up to this than, than town meeting day. How do we get this town to show up and to understand what's going on? Instead of spending the first hour talking about how the formula works, is like, what do we want, what do we want accomplished for Rutland Town? What's the best way to hit our entire population so they can show off whatever day we pick, on a Tuesday, and, and make their voices heard, instead of after the fact saying, I didn't understand that, I didn't know that? How do we get that to them? And I'm all ears, and I wanna do that.
If you can't get more, oops, no, I'm sorry.
Um, we really had a very low, even with mail in, ballots mailed out, what do we, like, thirteen hundred people voted?
At a thirty-three hundred.
At a thirty-three hundred, and honestly, that's kind of, we had another low count, actually in March, right? So you're right, how do you, how do you get, how do you get more people to vote? And how easy that was, you know, we had a, people got it through the mail. That was very discouraging, to see that total number, that only thirteen hundred people voted.
And I want everyone to see the impact it has on them, just because you hear a number doesn't mean, and I, and I feel for everybody, but it doesn't mean that your taxes are going up six hundred dollars. How do we get them to see that? And, and, and hit everybody? And then I'm, I'm happy that the town's voting on things, but we're, we're at a thirty-three percent voter turnout, and it's within a margin of two and a half percent. So we have no majority screaming, this is what needs to happen. How do we get the message out? And you guys are here.
Over to...
So Mary, how do you, how do you get the message out?
The circle deadline is the fifteenth, okay? So you've gotta have a really good message in there. And we've presented some of what I hope would be the content tonight. But because there's a delay time, which is why I was asking about the timing, there's a delay time for getting the circle out. And if you have a vote before it gets out, of course, that nice article isn't gonna do anything. So anyway, I'm sympathetic, I'm trying to, trying to figure out what the timing is for all of those reasons. But yeah, I mean, getting the message out is constant, it's every public official has to get the message out.
Well, I'll give you some timing stuff. If you write letters to the editor, chances are they'll get in there, and you don't have to worry about timing, at least not two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, or like the circle or whatever. People that support it should do that, but I'll bet you there aren't, very, very few people in this town know, for instance, that the tuition rate in the city school system, which most of our kids attend, so that's a majority, is almost twice what the per-student rate is in the Rutland City system. How the hell can that happen? That's just not fiscally responsible, it's not morally responsible.
They can charge us more if they want, they don't choose to.
And what, and, and, and how can that change? Can a senator put a bill in, for instance, that says that school, receiving school districts are not allowed to charge any more than the, than the state rate? Why can't somebody do that and stop this? It's, it's usury, is what it is. Whatever their budget is short down there, all they have to do is increase the tuition rate, and all of a sudden they get hundreds of thousands of dollars more from Rutland Town.
And our students don't count against their per pupil count, 'cause we're tuitioning them in, it's, it's significantly just a revenue line. But if, if they do that at Rutland City, then they kinda come up with more money from where Rutland City's getting it from. Because again, they're not, it's not Rutland City doing it to us, it's Montpelier saying, okay, well, if they have a million less in revenue, where are we gonna get it from? And it's not as, there's, there's gotta be some changes made, but again, with the way we fund things, it's not as simple as, and they don't have to sit at the table with us.
Do they ever justify their, their increases?
They set a tuition rate, and then the state comes back with an allowable tuition rate, which is typically higher. So they could come back to us and ask for more. So it's a, it's a dangerous game at the negotiation table, if we go bitch and they say, well, technically we could be charging you more, so we're gonna do that now. I'd hate to see that, and I don't think they'll do it, but there's, there's not a lot of leverage we have.
From a political point of view, to your question, to your comment over there, is it, if, I think most of us that value democracy feel the same way you do. It's pathetic that we only have half of the people in this town showing up to vote, or any town. How many do you think would show up if we didn't do mail-in voting? You would be having seventeen percent of your electorate deciding.
It's a hundred and fifty, love.
You wanna take a chance on that?
It's a hundred and fifty, love.
Wanna take a chance that the people that are more motivated to back the students and, and pass a budget regardless of how much it goes up, as opposed to those that, that don't wanna see their taxes increase? And, and let seventeen percent come to vote, eighteen, twenty, maybe? We went from thirty-some odd to forty-some odd, a ten percent increase this time around, which is pretty good, Mary, forty percent.
How much was it to mail bills and then have the election? How much was that?
Oh, yes.
How much was that? For the ballots, to mail them out? I wanted to know the cost.
Postage, we mailed a, out two thousand eight hundred and one dollar, thirty, whatever six, twice sixty-eight is.
And then we actually had the vote, and then we had, how many of the votes, election people did we have here that you paid for?
Plus it costs thirty cents, thirty, thirty-two cents to stuff the ballot.
Yeah.
All right, plus the envelopes.
Yeah.
And what have you. But in reality, all you're doing is displacing my mileage to come to vote for a dollar thirty-eight, and I can't even run my electric hybrid here for a dollar thirty-eight.
I know, but then we also had the elec- how much was that?
Huh? Wow, that's, those hours are, you can't change those hours.
No, but I'm just asking, what was that cost? I just wanted to know the cost.
The total cost, we don't have. Town clerk treasurer would have that.
Because, you know, now this is another, another time we're gonna...
That's a question, that's also what we're trying to figure out. That's why I keep asking about timing and trying to get some, the select board's meeting tomorrow night, we're wondering if there's anything we need to hear from you, just issue for that.
Um, I'll take Chris and then Barbara, and then I'd like the board to discuss what we'd like to do. Chris?
You have to give the seven-day notice, right? But there's a twenty-day notice of, that you have to put them in the mailbox.
If we're going to mail them again.
If you mail them, plus you have to get the timing to get them in the envelope, get the envelope, there's, it's, so if you, if you're gonna plan on two votes...
We may not be able to mail it, it sounds like.
You're gonna cut it real quick.
Yeah. Barbara?
If, so, oh, so people are not coming to meetings? Um, they're not learning, you know, the, the budget that you're dealing with and the cuts that you're dealing with? So I think the option is to go to them, if there's a budget for that, to create door hangers or, um, some other materials you can leave with them. You know, maybe borrowing some techniques from political candidates is one option that's coming to mind, particularly since you're not getting people to, to hear the message.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Tina, I got one quick one.
Okay, and after these two, we really do need to do some work.
I'd call up WCX. I mean, you're not the only school that's in this predicament, and get them to put a story together, and slam the state. Put it all on the state, say, we don't have control of this stuff, and you have to get the ball rolling, I mean, statewide, get the ball rolling, so people know that these local school boards don't have control anymore, and we have to fix that.
I'll lead the charge, and I promise you guys that, I'll go to Montpelier, but we still need to, we need, we still need to pass... I'll go to Montpelier, but we still need to, we need, we still need to pass a budget here for what we want to do. We have that control, we got to pass that. I will take the fight where it needs to get fought. But that, this is not the time and the place. We need to, we need to, in my opinion, we need to be backing our staff, we need to be backing our educators, we need to be backing our kids, and then we can take the fight elsewhere. We need more towns to come with us, but we can't keep having this infight and blaming Montpelier when we need to do something here.
It's the quickest way to get the townspeople to see the predicament that you're in, because everybody will find it, whether it's on Facebook or on TV, they'll will find that WCX article.
Thank you, Kurt. Lilly?
I just want to say really quickly, I support what you all are doing with all of this, and my thought would be, I don't think we should cut anything else. I think we should really try to get the correct message out about the fact that we want to go to school, and here's the reason why this is, and if you're worried about it, here you can go onto this calculator and figure out what the actual impact is. So in my mind, and you all can make whatever decision you feel like is right, I would say focus on getting the messaging out and a PR campaign versus cutting anything else.
Now, I'm a program director at PEG TV, and I'd be more than happy to host a program with selected school board members, and like was mentioned, Colin, the presentation that you made, it was right on. I mean, that needs to get to as many people as possible. There's a lot of people, especially elderly, that watch PEG TV.
Well, we're lucky to have PEG TV here tonight, so this will be on.
Well, that's good, but you can have a whole.
So tell your friends.
You can have a whole interview program, and, and it can run, it can run multiple times, I can get multiple times on there. It worked when we, it worked when we had the Public Service Building program and vote, prior to the vote. And we had all, all agencies of the town represented there.
Is your email on the website? Is your email on the town website?
Pardon me?
Is your email address on the town website?
Yes.
I will reach out to you, I would love to do that.
What about the YouTube?
Oh, come on, I'd love to.
I just came tonight in case anybody needed a, a pinata or a beer.
Well, we appreciate that, thank you.
Back full of cash.
I'll, I'll, I'll take the fight with you, I'll write the bill, if you want, if you got good ideas, I'll be on this TV show. But, you know, I've been quiet because you haven't heard all the bad news. I mean, this isn't going to get any better.
No, we know.
There's about a two-hundred-million-dollar hole in the state education fund, and they haven't finalized a 2025 budget yet. So, you know, they may find some money that is going to be able to help pay down your budget, but I wouldn't count on it. And I think a lot of people did count, they were going to do that. I mean, they just took the marijuana tags. I'm on the education committee. We fought, that's going to go to after-school programs, and it doesn't go through the LEA, it goes right directly to the program coordinators and managers. We tried to get it so we could help pay down the education, you can't. They put a guardrail around it, so that if anybody took that money, the Act Sixty was going to be repealed. So, so we, we're living with what, you know, the way it is, it is politics. And I see it every day up there. You don't want me balancing your checkbook? That's why, I know Louis, and I know he, he's, he's good at what he does, but I can tell you that, they're probably going to get Brian Callmire or Hammer me for saying this, but I see it every day. You know, I didn't vote for the school lunch program, where they, they want everybody to have it. Matter of fact, I wanted them to not have everybody have it, but it's, it's the social programs that get the priority up there, and it is politics. So, you know, nobody can count, you can't count on inflation. You know, that's part of, part of what we're dealing with right now, one percent inflation rate, we're all feeling. So, you know, people that are, I talk to a lot of teachers, and they, they say to me, you know, what are we doing wrong? All we want to do is teach kids. And, you know, now we got all this big fight about the budget, are they mad at us? No, they're not mad at you, it's, it's, it's just the way things are. You know, everybody, the education fund is paying for Burlington High School and Vermont State University. We're all in this together, and every time, we haven't seen PCB testing is, you know, school construction, there's a bill on my committee right now, where they're going to build a task force. Two years from now, they'll make a decision that's going to affect us three years from now, and that's part of the problem. I wasn't in the legislature when they passed Act One Twenty-Seven, that was 2022, but we're dealing with it now, two years later. So I'm trying, I want to get the budget process somehow caught up so that, the state should have to tell you what the education rate is before town meeting day, when the, when the town has to have their budget.
Yep.
And, and that's just common sense, but there seems to be a lack of it up there.
That's no kidding.
Yep.
It's not a new concept.
So I, so I don't, I don't want to be like you are, all it's going to rain, but, you know, things, things have to change up there. And, and don't you think that the chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee isn't feeling pressured right now? Because the people that are going to vote are, they know who caused it, all right? So, and, you know, we can only do what we can do up there. And believe me, we're, I'm a taxpayer too. Eighty-one percent of my property taxes go to fund education. And, and you really have to look at it like that. Well, only fifteen percent of it is to the state, the rest of it's on the, is on the district, but that's a simplified way of looking at it, but it's not simple, so. So I, you know, I, I want to do what I can to help, and I'll continue to help even if I don't get reelected, this isn't a reelection bid, but, you know, that's the other problem. Every two years, we, we change legislators up there, and they, they don't, two years from now, they don't know what's coming. And that's got to change.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I suggest something? On this PEG TV thing, a lot of people don't get it. I don't get it because I have DirecTV. It's not allowed for us, I guess. And anyway, maybe you could have an episode in on YouTube, and advertise that it's going to be on YouTube and PEG TV. So watch it, you know?
How about Front Porch Forum? A lot of people are on there.
Yeah, I, I've been posting the meetings on front page, our Front Porch Forum.
It goes on YouTube right now.
Yeah, I think it does go on YouTube, these PEG TV shows. If you Google it on YouTube, you might be able to find it.
As a matter of fact, sometimes you can get it quicker on YouTube than you can get it on TV, based on scheduling.
But if, but if people don't know it's there, they're not going to watch it. What, what's, what's going to tell them? You have to.
You got to tell them, that's it.
Send everybody an email, it's going to be on.
Or you take some advertising in the Rutland Herald, they love to have advertising, it keeps the thing going, you know, we need something. Just advertise. School board, check PEG TV, channel, whatever, or YouTube, put it right on there. Put it on your website.
And if there's any, rumors, not the right word, but, but if there's still any underlying things about the potential bond that got voted down the first time, that is off the table, but I don't know if that was understood when the second vote, because I heard at least a couple of people, they were like, I'm not voting for that bond, I voted no again. You know, so just anything you can do to kind of help that, because I think that played a role too, and, and, you know, same.
With that last vote thing was really kind of, I got it in the mail, and it was just like, I'm not sure what this is all about, because I'd never got one like that. It was just a little piece of paper, it said yes or no, mail it back. It's like, what does that mean? I don't know.
I don't know who, that would, that would be a question for that side, because I.
I'm just telling you what, what I, when I got it in the mail, I said, what's this all about? Okay, this is a vote. But it wasn't like a regular ballot. It was just a piece of paper with a yes or no.
Well, it's going to be the same way next time.
So I think the language was from the school board, and I believe that the design of the ballot was from the town clerk.
There's not, there's not time to have it printed on a tabulator sheet, so it looked like a regular ballot.
Because we would have to recalibrate the voting machine, have to send the card back to them and then get it back.
I, I just, I didn't have the answer, I wasn't pointing fingers, I just didn't have the answer.
It's eight o'clock, so I'd like to just take a pulse of the board. Do you want to continue discussing changes to the budget tonight, or do you want to move that to our regular scheduled meeting next Tuesday?
Wow. I'm fine with it, I think we should target a date.
For a vote, or? So I think that depends on what we're doing on the budget. If we are able to approve a draft tonight, then we could warn it within two weeks and plan on the twenty-first. If we wait till next week and aim to finish it that night, then we could aim for the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, whatever that Tuesday is. Twenty-eighth.
Memorial Day is the twenty-seventh.
Correct, so it'd be the day after Memorial Day. Just keeping it on a Tuesday, I think makes sense, because that's when people are, are used to voting.
A third of them are.
A third of them.
We mix it up, and we see what happens. Voting this that Saturday.
So Jeff, would you like to go for a discussion tonight, or push it to next Tuesday and think about what we've heard tonight?
I don't agree with all of this.
Abby?
I mean, we have, I mean, part of me wants to look at it today. We're here, might as well.
Colin?
I'll defer to you guys, I could do it tonight, or I could wait as well. We got some good feedback, I think we got to get some messaging out.
If we get it done tonight, maybe we can start with our messaging.
Tim?
I'm torn. It's hard decisions to make in the next forty minutes, you know, or however long. So, so what's pushing it to the, to the next?
Just giving you some time to digest and.
I mean, we're going to want to utilize the circle too, there's a lag.
Yeah, I still think if we're, if we're aiming to get this vote in by the end of the month so that we have a chance to vote again if it doesn't pass, the circle probably won't come out till June first at the earliest.
I think that's right. It's going to be probably, what did we do last time? Two and a half weeks publication? And I was really pushing it.
Yeah.
It's more likely, no, you're, I don't think you were part of that one. Like, three weeks.
Yeah, I think it's too tight. I, I don't think that we can count on the circle, if we're planning to have a vote this month anyway.
Maybe what you should do is end the meeting, excuse us, and then you can decide what you want to do. Because I think you're a little uncomfortable.
Well, we, we want to be as transparent as possible too, because it's, it's really important, I think, for the public to hear us weighing back and forth. So I think what I'd like to do is why don't we take a five-minute recess and come back with, if, and we can at least start the discussion, we don't have to decide tonight. Okay?
Can I ask one other thing for budgeting purposes? Mm-hmm. Nailing out ballots or no, that decision needs to be made sooner rather than later.
I think.
Same as last time?
I think that because we're trying to get this vote off, hopefully within two weeks from our decision, that we will not have time for a ballot to be mailed this time.
We're just trying to.
Yeah.
Figure out our timing as well.
That's going to have a political impact, I hope you realize that.
I, I'm, I hear you. Teresa?
Hi, thank you. It sounds like a common theme is educating the voters on what exists, what's present, and what is needed next, and then, second, is how to reach the voters. And I just wonder if it's too big of a job for just the board to be taking on all that. So I would challenge us to think about how we're going to get that education out there, and who is going to do it, and the team of people that might be needed to reach the voters, because they're not coming to us. We, we, we have seen the numbers, we can find out who is voting and who did not vote, and I think taking a very strategic look on how we're going to reach the people who are and are not voting would be extremely helpful going forward.
Thank you, Teresa.
Tina?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Do our students and parents know, like you've done, you've done a very good job at educating, I feel like trying to get the word out, but are we allowed to talk about this within school, with our kids, about what's at stake here? Because if our kids knew that athletics are on the line, they're going to start talking, and they're going to talk to their parents, and they're going to be social media buzzing, and that's one way to get it out, but I don't know how much you're allowed to advocate for that in school. I would really like my kids to want to come to school, and if we get rid of those programs, why would they want, what motivates them to come to school if you get rid of those things? It will make it so miserable. So are we allowed to have them be advocates for this?
Absolutely, but also it's not their fight, in my opinion.
It's not.
It's our job. We're their voice.
I, I will defer to Mr.
We're their voice and.
About what, what we're allowed to talk about in schools.
Well, I mean, everything we talk about in public can be talked about in schools. I mean, it's not as if we're talking behind closed doors. I think one of the things you have to be careful of is the messaging that goes home. And so just because we're talking about cutting athletics does not mean we're, we're, we're cutting athletics. And so if a, excuse me, if a, if a staff member would say to their kids, hey, well, if, you know, your parents don't vote on the budget, they're going to cut athletics, some community members can react that very negatively, that we're using their kids to influence their votes. But we also, then you don't, no longer control the messaging. That, I know my daughter, she came home, you know, many times she comes up, delivers a message, like, I don't think that's what was said, I'll call the school, and that's not what was said, but it was she puts her own little spin on things. So I think we just have to understand that if we want to get messaging out to our, our families, then really, I think through, you know, through Mike or through Sarah, you know, through staff, really through the adults in the building, not necessarily through the, the kids. Kids aren't going to ask questions, because obviously this is a public, you know, session, parents may hear some things, so kids may generally ask a teacher, teacher can respond, but that's something I think where, you know, Sarah, Mike can work with the staff on just what the messaging is. But we have to be very careful, you know, I've, I've been a part of budget voting in three different states, and I've seen budgets voted down, and I've also seen that, you know, school districts where they, part of the strategy was to use the kids, and it was just, it was not well received. And they said, it put the kids right in the middle of a, a battle that they really shouldn't be in, and create a lot of anxiety, a lot of stress on these kids when really shouldn't be there, you know, really it's an adult discussion, and, you know, we need to figure out what's best for the kids and, and, you know, understand that they don't get caught in the middle of this.
And, and again, this is, this is our stage, this sets the stage for the next five and ten years. And the, the, the kids are going to hear it no matter what, I'm not going to preach it to them, but do you want them looking down saying, they're arguing about spending six grand mailing out ballots, but we have no problem chopping nine grand so they can't go to sports games? What kind of town do we want to be? What kind of school do we want to have? If that's the vote today, and I don't, I am, I'm here as a seat at the table for my three kids, that we're not the town, we never were the town, that every year are we going to, are we cutting school busing? Is that where we want to go? Or do we want to set a precedent that we're going to educate our kids, and we'll take the fight on a different day to Montpelier where it belongs? But we're not going to have our kids, we're not going to have parents of our kids worried about, are we cutting programming? Are we cutting these things? Is that the school we want? And it's not the school I want, that's why I'm here. That's not the school I want for my kids, your grandkids, my kids' kids. They deserve better than that. We can have all the fights we want, but that, that messaging gets out. And, and Addison passes a budget, they rift all their teachers before that, and that's, it sends a message that you guys want us to cut, we're going to have to cut jobs, but we don't know the fallout for that next year.[1745.58] Well, these teachers are gonna have opportunities to move. Do they want to be in a school system that every year they're worried about they're gonna get rifted just to pass a budget? Or do we want to say who we are as Rutland Towners, that this is our school, this is our pride? This is what we have. This is why people come here. So do we want to keep that, or do we not? I personally do.
So, I mean, that's probably, so, like, my heart says, "Go back out to vote, as is, with a strong budget", or a strong message. That's my, that's my feeling. Why, I don't want to just, I'm not nervous. I'll talk all night long about this, but it'd be a long conversation, because I look at every single one of these, and I'm like, you know, all of them bring value in some capacity. All of them are gonna impact people in some way. Tax rate, like, you know, if we're cutting pre-K to half-day, that means those kids are going to some sort of daycare. So you're saving that family, what, $150? But they might have to eat $3,000 in daycare if they don't have, you know, a village around them. Yeah, so there's, and I'm not saying that that's the case, but that's the way I need to review, because this is the first time I got this, just like you guys did. So, you know, I need to game out these scenarios to say, "This makes no sense whatsoever", you know, when I'm looking at particular situations, right? And some hold more value than it does for one family versus another, but, you know, I don't want to, you know, close one Pandora's box, open another one. So that's the only reason I feel like thinking on it would be a good idea, just to kind of think out all the scenarios. But I'm welcome to have the discussion tonight, if that's where it leads. Yeah, just like the bus piece has an impact, you know? Does that lead to more truancy, you know? I mean, there's plenty of parents that are, you know, off to school just before the bus gets there, and, you know, they know that their kids are safely getting to school, and they're in a safe environment for a period of time. What decisions do those parents make at that point? So that's what I say. No easy answer when you start asking those really difficult questions when it comes to, you know, cutting. And I had this, I'll just share this real quick. I've had it for months. It was something I read about when we were looking to, when we were writing the first budget. And like, you know, and this came down, like, "Oh, what do we need to cut?", things like that. This is an excerpt, but it said, "The results of this study show that declining state support and subsequent cuts in local school budgets can slow student progress with potentially lasting consequences. First, suspending declines that followed the Great Recession halted five decades-long increase in student test scores, reading and math. Second, those cuts also were associated with slower rates of college-going among students on track to become first-time college freshmen. Though the impact of tough economic times on public schools may be felt for years to come, the severity of the consequences for students can be minimized by maintaining support for instruction as much as possible." So that kind of hits home, too. That's what I got.
Oh, I took the time and went and got a budget, and I went through line for line. I don't agree with a lot of these things that are down here on paper because of the impacts they're gonna have. I would not want to see the SOR officer gone, but that would be devastating to this school. I know how great she is with the kids and how she works here, so that kind of stuff I would not see. I looked at a budget, I looked at it, and it's $119,000 is all you can cut out of this budget. And that's without a lot of this stuff here. And that's all that can come out of that budget. I've worked here for thirty years. And that's it right there. After that, it's personnel. So, you know, we either bolt this budget in, or we're shooting ourselves in the foot if we don't. As much as, as much as people disagree with that, and this is a tough town. This is a very tough town with people trying to pass a budget. And but over the years, we've had all of those lovely things coming in, all this extra money and all this kind of stuff. It's not here anymore. The way the government is, the way the state is, it's utter chaos at this point. And so what can we do here to make this, to keep this, the school that it has been all this time? And we have, we have to, we have to do something. I know it hurts to say yes, but if we don't, if we don't, it's gonna be worse to our kids. And that's what I'm concerned about, is our kids. All of our kids, because they are all of our kids. From pre-K all the way to graduation in twelfth.
I would strongly urge you to find a way to mail the ballots, because if you don't do that, it's going to be a very difficult job to claim transparency, because we know the voter turnout will be significantly less. And we're already complaining that it's not high enough yet. And we're gonna do everything we can to get more out. And I think combining that with the attitude that we want everybody in the town to be able to vote. And in a busy summertime, good weather's here, gardening and all this of other things. It's so much easier for people to vote by mail. That was proven by the numbers in the last election. They were astronomically skewed in favor of the mail-in ballots versus the show-up-in-person ballots.
I think there's another view of that, because I was ballot clerk for half a day, and some people were angry about getting ballots in the mail. So you're gonna have to make that decision yourself, but it isn't totally one-sided.
Well, it was a significant minority that had that attitude.
I don't know, Don, I didn't count them, but I don't think you did either.
Well, I talked to a whole mess of people that were happy that they got mail-in ballots.
So, Tim?
Who was supporting the school, as a matter of fact.
Actually, Jeff, so are you saying that you would keep the budget the same? To where we have it on the revote, or what are you?
I, I like my cuts more than I like these cuts.
Typical man.
Teresa, just to answer your question, I think, I can't see the text because they're very long.
It's gonna be mapped out worst-case scenario.
Yeah. The worst-case scenario is that if we don't get a budget in place by July 1st, and especially by August 10th, that we can only borrow a certain amount of money until we pass a budget. And so it really complicates things. It's not nearly what we need to function as a school. So we do need to pass a budget. It's not, it's not exactly a strict deadline of July 1st, but it's pretty, pretty close to that.
Well, yeah, it'll re-tactic at least there.
Yeah.
We'll send out tax bills with a dollar tax rate. So some people think it's a dollar, but it's not. Because we're gonna have to resend those all out again and go through a revision. So technically, we'll keep inching along, but it's got devastating effects as far as morale and everything like that. We need to, we need to get together. We need to pass a budget. We need people to vote. I'll give you my stance right now. I think I'd like to hear, we haven't, I haven't heard an overwhelming people tell me what they'd like to cut. What's the magic number? That's kind of how you back into a budget, is like, what do we want to set the tax rate at? How much do you want us to want to cut? And no one's got an answer for that. We got a very close vote. We've got a budget that I'd like to add to, but I'm not going to, that's adequate to the school we have. I'd like, I'm not going to cut any further at this particular point. I'm okay putting the same vote back out and canvassing everybody and getting, getting the word out. I haven't, I haven't heard from anyone directly that I want my tax rate set at XYZ. I want a $500,000 cut. And right now, we're just arbitrarily picking apart and nickeling, diming ourselves down to a very ordinary school that I didn't move here for. And I think, you know, we're doing a disjustice to the people who just moved in, that they get sold on a school and then say, "Hey, thanks for coming, but we're taking it all away". And I'd like to hear those voices, and I'd like to hear them show up, and I'd like to have a majority of this town show up and tell us what they think. However, we do that. I don't know if it's mailing or not. It's not my avenue of expertise, but it's, I want to know what this community thinks. And if it's an overwhelming majority that say this is way too high, then okay. Then I, then I can take the axe off, but I'm not gonna sit here and nickel and dime this down. That's my stance. I'm only one of five.
Tina?
Yeah?
Say something. From past experience, and Jeff, you remember when we had some budgets go down? And, and one time, we presented the same budget again, and that went down like a lead balloon, you know? So I think, I would suggest is you're wasting your time if you just try to jam it down their throat, you know? Now, as far as where you can cut, I don't have, I don't have a particular area. But we all know that the primary area of cost is salaries and benefits. Now, somebody at some point negotiated those. Now, is that done at the supervisory union now, or is that done at the Rutland Town Board?
Supervisory.
Supervisory union.
Okay, well, then that's, at some point, the problem's gonna resurface again. And so if we don't think about that in relation to how we solve this problem on this particular day in history, you're just shooting future boards in the foot, you know? Because we can't, you can't turn the heat off, you can't turn the lights off, and you can't stop bringing buses and the kids to school. I mean, the idea of people bringing your kids to school, I've driven by here from time to time and see the nightmare traffic out here in front of the place when you, when you either drop off or pick up children. So the school buses have got to run, so you might as well put that out of your mind if you're thinking about getting rid of the school bus. You know, kids have got to get to school, and so you gotta look at something that's gonna present, the concept that you thought about how you can impact the cost and how to run the place. And like I said, you can't turn the lights off, and you, and you can't turn the, you know, and not buy fuel oil for the boiler.
So we can cut staff, or we can take stuff away from the kids. That's what it comes down to. And those...
I didn't hear your first comment.
We can cut staff, or we can take stuff away from the kids. That's what you're left with.
Well, you gotta, you gotta do the thing that's gonna be the least impactful.
To who?
And that's why you're getting the big bucks. Figured out.
It's devastating to the staff to cut them. And it's devastating for them to say that a $55,000 bus run's more important than me. It's devastating to take away sports. It's devastating for everybody. What do we want to have? What do we want to have as a school? Can we afford it? Is this, is this budget out of control? No. Is it, is it what we've always had? Yes. Did we get smashed in the face with a tax change? Yes. Will it impact all of us the same? No. So let's all take a look internally at what we want to spend, how it affects us. Really, no. If you're very angry with Montpelier, also, no, is it going to impact me financially?
We've been angry with Montpelier before.
Correct.
And it didn't seem to get us anywhere.
But see how it financially impacts you. Is it worth for me to riff $300,000 to save an extra $7 a month? It isn't for me. That's what we're talking about. If I want to equate a cut to what it physically costs me, that's what we're talking about, cutting...
Yeah, but what it comes down to is, it's the folks sitting at home that are paying the tab. You know, and a lot of people, I think, are tapped out from comments I hear. You know, they're maxed out. And Uncle Sam's not too thrifty, you know, and everybody's looking at that. Then, of course, the first thing that impacts folks is the local tax situation. And we just got done buying a public service building. And I'm not saying that that wasn't necessary. I'm just saying we're paying for it.
Correct.
And so here we are, folks are getting asked to pay for this deal again. And I, and the folks I talked to, a lot of them are just tapped out. Lot of fixed incomers, a lot of retirees, a lot of Social Security folks, you know? And for the folks that got a raise or are expecting a raise, well, how about the folks paying the tab? Did they get a raise? You know, so you can look at the whole big picture, make the necessary adjustments.
Jason Pugh, for those that don't know me, but I have two kids that go to school here. They get a fantastic education, and every single thing on that list of proposed cuts is absolutely ludicrous to me. And if you really want to gut the school and lose all of our teachers, because as Abby said, you know, $20,000 from supply closet, you know where that's gonna come from? That's gonna come from teachers' families. I know that because my wife is a teacher. And we're gonna pick that tab up, because they're not gonna go without in classrooms. That's how teachers operate. I know that's what they do. And that's just gonna drive them away from the school and go somewhere else where they're more supportive. So I respectfully disagree that lead balloon comment, because I think the budget that was reevaluated for the revote is a sensible budget. And if it means we need to just canvas neighborhoods and put more signs up, volunteer our time, I'll do all that stuff to get people out to vote, and so I support Colin's proposal and others. But I think everyone's doing their best, and we got dealt a raw hand, and, you know, our property taxes all go up. But guess what? All of our home values probably went up as much or more. And people are moving here for the school, and if you gut the school, we're not gonna have that.
I think, I'm not trying to jam anything down anyone's throat, but when we voted on this particular budget last time, it was projected to be a 160 tax rate. It's now been affirmed, or pretty soon to be affirmed, that the same budget's actually a 155 tax rate. So while they look the same, it's five cents cheaper.
And that would be what, $250,000 cut essentially?
Yeah.
If the yield didn't change, and we came in here and cut $250,000, the tax rate would've went down about five cents. So we just got that, just based on the yield change. First, what we were proposing, or what we were expecting versus what Montpelier came up with.
Is that math right, Louis?
Louis had to step on it.
Oh, okay.
That is approximately correct, yes.
And to his point, on Teacher Appreciation Week, we sit here talking about this budget. But I was thinking about this earlier, like, Don, you said, like, can we circumvent the classroom size and, and, you know, you know, cut a couple of teachers, or whatever? We can. But if Rutland City's not done that, Fairhaven's not done that, and Outer Valley's not done that, what keeps these teachers here from saying, "Hey, I can go there, make the same money, and have 18 kids in my classroom, they're being Rutland Town, and have 35"? So that's, when I say game-out situations, that's something that we have to consider, is, you know, the good teachers we have, how to keep them. And I've sat on hiring committees over the past seven-year, five-year, or whatever, over a couple of years on my previous time on the board, and, you know, they're not just, you know, you're not just walking in, just flourishing teachers walking in, and you just know that they're the one, you know what I mean? Like, you know, there's plenty of posts out there on SchoolSpring looking for teachers. So if we have the good ones, we want to keep them.
Well, I never complained about my class sizes, because this town had a great abundance of great kids. It was those extra programs that made teachers like me and a whole mess others like want to stay here. We wouldn't have left just because of class size or workload or whatever. This is where we want it to be, because this was the place where things were happening. Not only during school, but after school. In the photography lab that was in that back room that I created with my own equipment and had kids coming in there after school to learn how to... Of course, that was back in the days when we developed actual mylar's into pictures. But, no, I mean, you know...
Don, you really helped create that, you helped create the school community that it is today.
Yeah, and, and I... I'm so committed to you presenting the reasons that you did tonight to more people, and then getting those more people to translate what they hear from you into a vote. And that is only gonna happen if you mail the ballots out. I'm telling you that from a lot of years in politics, okay? And I understand what Mary said, but there were 1,100 voters that... And I understand what Mary said, but there were 1,100 voters that mailed those ballots in. And I'm damn sure that were no great percentage of that 1,100 that didn't feel really good about having the ability to put their vote on paper. And I'm also sure that there were a whole mess of yes votes in that bunch. So I'm not saying to do it because I want the vote to go either way, because I think you can, I think that if you do the right kind of a campaign, then you need to get the most ballot votes in, that majority. And the only way to get that majority is with mailing, because the proof is in the past. You're not gonna get a significant percentage in late May to come to the polls. Look at the number that came this last time. If, if you calculate that percentage, I think it was probably, oh, I don't know. I didn't do, I didn't do the numbers on that. I wasn't on the late, I wasn't on the late crew, so I didn't get to do those totals, but it wasn't a very significant percentage. Maybe it was 10 or 11 or 12% that actually came to the polls.
Well, I mean, I mailed mine, but I will show another voter, too. This is easier. I'm not, I'm not opposed to having that discussion in depth, and I, I want participation. I really want participation, because we don't have it right now, and we don't have guidance. Again, affirm, affirm one way or the other would lead me to act differently, but I, I'll, I'll come on the show. I'll message wherever we need to message, I'll call WCAX. But as it stands right now, from what I've heard from all sides of the community is, I think we've got a good budget and we can get it passed, but people need to know. What, what they need to know is how everything works, and what we're in control of, and what we wanna have as, as an outcome.
Well, what you need to do is get, get your talking points, you know, Tina, with whatever board members you want there. It's, you kinda have to limit it to.
To two?
Two or three, maybe?
Two.
Because, well, there's space, space limitations.
And quorum limitations.
And then I'll just facilitate the discussion for you.
I, I'd like to move back, if you don't mind, just to going around the board. Abby, do you wanna share your thoughts?
There's, yes, there is nothing on here that I will support cutting on this thing. I, I, you cut athletic transportation, and, I mean, there are times now we don't have buses, and people who work till 4 o'clock can't get their kids there, I mean, that's.
Let's focus on one and two.
One and two?
Yeah. Let's look at one and two off. I, it's, I'm feeling like, from the board, you said that you didn't, you didn't feel like we could cut more than 120, right?
And I, I'm go, I would vote, go to the same budget, then. Go with the budget we already have.
One we already removed.
Yep. So let's keep it that.
Which I can accept, we already removed it.
I thought I spoke my piece, but.
I just wanna make sure that you're still on the same page. I'm gonna say my two cents at this point. I, I hear what you're saying, and I think that we have a really solid budget. That being said, I think we've heard from the voters, too, that they wanna see some change, and I, I feel like we could honor that by cutting a little bit more. It sounds like Louis was able to look at the plant operations, and I don't think that would take away from students, that's just something he found when he was going back through the budget, that we've changed, we are lucky right now that we have part-time versus full-time staff, so it, there are some savings. And I personally think that lifetime sports, as much as the kids loved it, that we can look for other funding sources for it. I, I still agree that we should keep the 5,000 in the student fees that we did on the first, just to help students that can't afford any fee that we charge for lifetime sports, if we figure out how to make it happen. And the kindergarten para for next year, I think, could go as well, because we have three classrooms. There's less students in each classroom, because we are able to split it up a little bit. We still have one para, and it's possible to get rid of it. So I, I would go for revote number two, with the change that 5,000 be added back into the student fees.
You cannot, we cannot ask parents to put any money into, as the funding source, like, I, like, like, if we are gonna cut lifetime sports, we can't say, we're gonna have the program, but now, parents, in order for your kids to do this, just like we do with field trips, in order for your kids to go on field trips, you have to pay $16 of the entrance fee and all this. We cannot, we cannot ask parents to do it. The amount of money that we, with our budget, we ask parents to pay on top of our budget to, for these things.
Then maybe we can't afford it right now, but there's other ways that we can look into raising money for it, with fundraisers, I, the PTO is having a color run in a couple of weeks, and we're raising money there. And there, there are avenues that we can try to raise.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that cannot be a way of supporting it, is by asking parents to pay it. You just can't.
We can look at different ways to have it, and whether that's getting community funding or something. I just feel like that's an extra, and as we heard tonight several times, the tax burden is just gonna get harder. And I love, I think it's a great program. I'm not disagreeing that we continue to try to have it, I just don't think it necessarily has to be funded in the budget, just like music is not funded in the budget. They have friends of music. We could have friends of lifetime sports, you know, and try to figure out how to fundraise for it. But I really hate fundraising right now. Any other way. Yeah.
Is eighth grade kid going into eighth grade? Okay. I mean, I, it's, I think what bothers me is the one, the one thing Sarah and Mike asked, I think, out of all of this, was that, that kindergarten para. Like, out of our entire things that we added, that was the one thing they came back to the board and said, we really need that. And it's, it's like slapping them in the face and saying, we don't really care what you need, because we're gonna cut one of the only things that you asked us to put in there. So I, and what is that gonna save the, so then I look at that, what is it gonna save? How much money, so we cut that position, we cut lifetime sports, we cut plant operations, not sure. How much, how much does that save the taxpayer? A penny? A dollar?
$105?
Well, one, one.
A penny and a half.
1.5 cents.
1.5 cents. For one, the one thing, like, I mean, that kindergarten para, that was the one thing that they came and said. Will you please add this to your budget?
And I can appreciate that, Tina. I mean, I would just implore, and I'm imploring just to the yes voters at this point, and teachers, and parents, and people out there, I like the budget, I think it's what we need at this school. If you're cutting some of these finite programs, you're just gonna come back to the people that are willing to have a property tax increase to pay for it anyways. This is a way to equitize it, it's touching every single one of our kids. It's $50 per kid, and it's touching every single one of them. They cut it out, I don't know how many long ago, but it is dead in this town for 20 years. Because once you cut it out, it's not coming back. And its financial impact is negligible in the long run, and the impact of that student and carrying that through the rest of their life is unmeasurable. And it ties this, ties them to this community. Talk about holistic learning, and kids that have never stepped foot on a mountain is eight miles from us. So I know we could chop, 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 but I, I don't think we're Nickland. I'm not, I told you where I stand. But again, I'm one, I'm one out of, one out of five, but that's where my vote is.
Want to tell ya?
We've got a ton of positive feedback.
Well, and it's gonna, I mean, it's, like Colin said, we're Nickland, I mean, it's not saving really anything, like.
But at the same time, it's, it's telling the no voters that, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying about messaging, but I'm not sure, even if we went door to door with the same exact budget, that we'd turn that many of them.
But if we could start, if we start pulling things out now, they're gonna continue to say, well, there's more that we can cut, but it's telling the voters that our students actually don't matter. Because that's what we're taking away. We're taking away, now we're starting to take away the things from the students. So that's where we have to look, like, I don't know, I just feel like they're the ones that matter in this whole, you know? It's not gonna do anything to our tax bill.
I guess I've heard, you know, I, without talking to everyone, who said, no, I don't, you know, are you, are you voting no to us, are you voting no to this budget, to this line item? Are you just voting no? And I don't know the answer to that. And I'm happy to hear it, I'm happy to hear that you wanna say, I, I want 20%, I don't care. That's fine, that's, that's where you should be, if that's where you wanna be. But again, I don't think we're moving the dial at 105 extra thousand dollars. We're certainly not impacting people's finances that much. I don't think we're influencing a no to flop to a yes. I'm just guessing that a penny's not enough, but I don't know. So that's kinda where I'm at. I mean, unless we're talking significant cuts, I don't, you know, let's, let's get 60 to 70% of the voters to tell us where they're, where they're at. And again, I'm not trying to jam it down, I'm not trying to throw this bag in anyone's face. It's not about me, but picking apart little pieces that don't change finances that much doesn't seem like the way we wanna be doing this year in and year out. And I get that it's, it's a tough economic environment, but every year's a tough economic environment. World changes, the world shifts. We live in a very expensive state to educate our students, but that's what Vermont is. So I don't know if that was helpful or not, Tina, or where you wanted to go tonight, but.
I would really like to see the budget spelled out with the, the first revote with the new yield. Is that possible, Louis, to do quickly, or is that something that we should bring back next time?
Give me about 30 seconds, and I'll have it on the screen.
Okay, thank you. Teresa?
Yes, hi, good. The way we talked about the timeline of the voting, did I understand it correctly? That we only have time for one vote before we are into the 80% of the budget, if not past, of the 13% cuts?
So what our hope was, and we haven't finalized that decision, but our hope was to try to vote by the end of this month, so that we would have time in June to get a vote off if we needed.
Okay.
We're hoping not to need it. Thank you, Louis.
So the one all the way to the far right would be your new budget. The second one that says FY25 all the way to the left, that's the second revote. So yeah, as you can see, it's a six cent decrease with the change, the $105,000 decrease, as well as the change to the yield.
What's the $105,000?
Yes.
Wait, what's, what's the $105,000? We don't want that in there.
This was with the $105,000? Oh, no, the first revote, just, that would be from not changing anything from the last revote. So option number one.
Well, then, if you're just changing the yield, then, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. We, we could see them both side by side, that's fine, too.
So you'd be at $1.5586, so $1.56.
So four cents, so.
So it would be two cent difference.
Great work. Do you wanna put the, the other one back in the second vote? With the, with the old yield?
No.
So you can see them side by side?
Sure, if you want to.
Yeah, 160 to 156, 155, eight.
So like four cents.
Forty bucks per hundred.
So that's no change to the budget with the new yield.
And not for nothing, but, you know, with, that's, that's the same equalized tax rate we had, we came out with last year. But we have a 10% discrepancy in CLA that's up in it from last year. So our common level appraisal is the thing hurting us, not this vote.
So with the 105, we would only, two cents?
Yeah.
So we take away a needed position. I mean, is it worth it for two cents?
I still think we could take out the plant operations.
What was that, again?
I still think we can take out the plant operations.
What was that? What is it?
$35,000. I mean, it's not, it's not a lot, but.
No, 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 I meant, it's fine, what is it? What is it, new?
It, it's just a reconfiguration of the positions that we have now. So we used to have so many full-time, and right now, we have hard time.
Maintenance, maintenance, okay. There's more on their backs.
No, it's not really. It's, it's kinda like the retirement savings. It's like, we're budgeting for, we don't know, right? So it's just being less conservative. It doesn't change, there's still enough in the budget to pay all of them. It's just divided, yeah.
Yeah, sure, I'll take that out.
So the yield change.
It helps us.
It, yeah, it changed in our favor, so, and that, that would've been approximately $200, $200,000 in cuts. If we walked in here three hours ago and slashed $200,000, you know, what would that have done to the perception for the town, right? That's what, yeah, I mean, if we would've came in, cut $200,000, that would've got the tax rate to where it is right now. Would there be any comfort from the community in seeing, seeing that change on their tax rate? Or do you feel like another $100,000 is gonna change the tie? I mean, it's, like you say, it's one penny, so I don't have the calculations here, but.
Well, if it's $200,000, that's, it's better than zero. And if you're gonna blame the state for a whole mess of things, you might as well give them credit for.
Thank you.
Giving us a better yield. You know, so.
I mean, ultimately, that's what you're looking, we're all looking at the tax rate here, right?
Does it make a difference whether the yield does it or you do it? There's a lot less pain to you if you let the yield do it.
So can I ask a question of calling the finance guy and put him on, on the spot for public math? But I think in your illustration, the change in the yield saved you over $200.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. So this additional bit is gonna tick, save you another 30 bucks or something, so. or something. So, I mean, the yield is much more material than any of this discussion.
Absolutely. So like, what's, it's basic, it's 1.7 cents, not two cents, the difference here. It's 17 dollars per 100,000 of appraisal, per year. So, a dollar 20 a month to shave that next level down.
So do the taxpayers just need to understand that their taxes are going to go up whether or not you vote yes or no? It's not going to matter.
Depends.
So.
If you're, if you're fully on the income sensitivity scale, your taxes probably won't go up at all.
So they know that.
Your rebate's going to go up in correspondence to our tax increase.
So if that's the education, we probably need to let them.
So your tax bill will not see a change this year.
Need to let them.
If you're fully on the, the state rebate system, you're not going to see a change in your property taxes by supporting this budget. Which I think is impactful, messaging, but.
Is Louis coming back on?
I'm still parenting tonight and deal with child issues.
Sorry.
Didn't think it'd be this long to meet.
All right. So, I don't hear any motions.
I motion we go back to with the same budget with the new, what is that thing?
Yield?
Yield.
Yep. No changes, including the?
A compromise and add on. I mean, if we can shift, shift things around without impacting students, let's cut the plant operations. Some extra savings there. Just slight alteration of my stance of not cutting anything. I'll take that. I can negotiate. So I propose a motion that we present the budget as last round with a new tax yield and hopefully get that finalized out of the state. That was just from Senator Collmore's understanding. So let's get that verified, as well as cutting an additional 35,000 out of the plant operations budget.
I second that motion.
You don't need to second it.
I concur.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. I, I think the yield, like, to Don's plate, took a little, little out of play for us in terms of having to make some, not even hard decisions, decisions that we just simply don't think are right for the school, you know? So, it's a hard position to take sometimes, when you're, you know, trying to, you know, do what's right for everyone in the community. But, I guess that we've been working on this like eight months now. So, and I think what, our July meeting, we'll be talking about next year's budget. So, you know, let's, I think it's, what we know, we know what we need to do and the message that we need to get out to the community, and also the message that we need to start to reinforce as a community to, uh, mount pillar here. So, like I said, it goes beyond funding, in my opinion. It, you know, it goes, uh, goes deeper than that for me. I think, uh, Vermont has a lot to offer and should meet the lowest GDP in the country, so.
I will have to vote no. I think we need to make some cuts. In the moment, not in staff. There's no staff. I'll have to say no.
Is there anything in particular?
Are we in discussion, or are we?
We're still in discussion right now.
Call, roll call, all right. Make sure.
Do you want to share, you know, something else that you were thinking?
Well, I, like I said, I went, I went through the budget line for line and just looked where we could tighten the money, tighten the belt, and, you know, of course, the athletics is a, is a goal. That's, I mean, we, we made it before without, for years without athletic bussing. But it just, a little bit everywhere adds up.
Did you just say you're, you want to cut athletic bussing?
Yes. Not the bussing, athletic bussing. We went years without it. And we'll have to do it again. There's, we're going to have to make a few changes. The people are going to have to tighten their belts. This is a crazy time, crazy time. But I think we can help a little bit.
So you, all of the stuff that you went through, you came up with athletic bussing?
As one of them.
That's.
Oh, I thought we were listening, I thought you were listing what you went through.
I know how school budgets work. You go through, you take a little bit from each place. Everybody will be fine.
Okay. My question is, is where are you taking the little bit? You haven't said anything except for athletic bussing.
Well, we, we weren't, we were given this tonight.
I know, aren't you going, we asked.
Okay, we had no prior meeting or anything. I went and got a budget and went through it and brought it tonight.
I know, and we've asked.
And there's, you know, there's been no other discussion.
Will you give us your list of what things you think you should, we should cut, so we can have a discussion?
That's what she's asking you to share.
Is what you just, what you went through and you said that you could take a little from. That's what I want to know.
Okay. You want, you want me to go through all of it?
Yes.
How about that bigger ticket items, not the thousands here and there, just?
Well, it all adds up. Go ahead, if you want to.
So, you wanted to take another 10,000 from fuel oil?
Yep.
So, we only budgeted for, this is just.
I don't, I don't want to debate any of that stuff. I'm just saying that's, by working here for 30 years, I know where we can just tighten things up a little bit. That's all.
Okay.
No, we don't want to talk about it.
Well, I mean, we can talk about, but I think part of the thing, like, here's an example of where I think that there's.
I don't like, I don't like a lot of these cuts on here at all.
Well, we, we can. For an example of the fuel oil, we already cut 10,000, right? So, was this the new budget that we approved? Okay. So we already cut 10,000, so at 100,000. But last year, we paid 134,000. So I would be really leery personally.
The price has come down quite a bit since last year.
But we don't know what's going to happen over the year.
Right.
So that's part of the problem. So if we already paid 134,000.
We don't want to over, yeah, okay.
But then if we have extra money in our budget, it goes back as surplus later.
But we don't want to over-budget if we don't have to.
Next one?
Um, he, he thinks that we can, 35,000 less in repair and maintenance services. So last year, we paid 80,000. We have 95,000 budgeted. So he wants to cut 35,000.
Okay.
5,000 supplies for maintenance, 5,000, no, 500 for uniforms. So, right now, our line item is 700 dollars for uniforms, and you're, you think that we can pay for 200?
None of the people here have uniforms.
Oh, that's.
They do, right?
Sports uniforms?
No, this is, this is custodians.
Oh, custodians, oh.
It is part of the master agreement that we have to provide uniforms if requested. So if we cut that, we can't provide, then we are.
No, you can do 100 dollars, that's fine.
For our four staff members?
I, I don't have a reservation tonight. I mean, I, that's.
Okay.
All right.
5,000 in technology services on page two. And we budgeted 45,000, and last year, we spent 44,400. So, I mean, 5,000 out of software, and software is, we don't have complete, I mean, the software, we spent 27,000 last year, and we have budgeted 30,000. So if we take out 5,000, then we, if we are getting the same software again this year, then we're not paying enough. So it's.
Is that educational software? So like, it would be your fast bridge?
Direct instruction.
Like fast bridge and all that. So, most likely, we're using those same IC, all that, so.
And then 20,000 in direct instruction supplies, which is what Abby was talking about. So last year, they spent 40,000, and it's budgeted for 50,000. A thousand from books and periodicals, 5,000 from furniture for direct instruction, 1,000 for supplies from the library, 3,000 from student fees for the principal's office at, instead of 7,000, and that's that scholarship line. So you're saying that you think 4,000 would be plenty, which would still be an increase of 2,000 from last year. 2,000 in supplies for the principal's office, and they spent 3,800 last year. And it was budgeted at 3,000. So you're suggesting to put in only 1,000?
Just tightening the belt, making adjustments.
I don't see any larger ones on here anymore, but 1,000 here and 1,000 there. That's over there.
What was that? 35,000 dollar one?
It repairs.
Repairs.
But, so the furniture, we already said that we were not taking anymore last time out of it, because.
Well, that was our discussion. And, um, so I think the total furniture line was 20,000, and we cut 10,000, right?
We knew we had two classrooms that needed new furniture desperately, right? We knew that, like, when we talked about it.
I mean, first of all, thank you, Jeff. I mean, I think tightening the belt, that's what we're hearing from the no's and the people that are, you know, income sensitive and like, they can't afford it. So I think that's good work. I mean, tightening the belt. My, my only concerns would be pulling back here, are we, are we adequately setting ourselves up to have to spend more in the future on some of these things? To just tighten today? I'm not opposed to it. To listen to your thoughts. I just don't want to get in a situation where we're shaving from, you know, and again, if we're not trying to affect instruction, it's always go to the building, go to the building and cut as much as we can. We can't turn the lights off. But at some point, we got to pay for this stuff. Is it cheaper to just swallow it today, or do we defer it off and then have a discussion about bringing it back in? And is that what the voters want to see? Some pain? So I understand what you did, and I appreciate that, and. I would just be hesitant, and some of the, some of the cuts not to go below the budget we had last year, at least the expense on the software piece, knowing that we'll probably have to renew on an oil piece, if we can get an accurate trajectory. I mean, we just don't want to create a position where we're in. And I, obviously, we shouldn't have a surplus walking in next year, but at least we can rebuild that back to revenue, where if we short, change ourselves in some of these areas, something bad happens, then we're in a little bit of trouble. But I think we have, we're putting some money in the capital expenditures, the potential we could tap for that this year. Am I wrong? Some of these trims that if we don't need to, throughout the year, tap that. I know we have to, I don't actually understand how that works as far as accessing that capital expenditure that we're parking there. But, um, is that something we can grab back? I mean, I just don't want to cut our nose out to spite our face, to shave a little, to show some pain, but also erode the, the plant to the extent we have to spend twice on it.
I, I would, I would feel uncomfortable cutting too much from repair and maintenance without first talking to Kelly, to be honest, and Sarah and Mike together. I, about, because we have a five-year plan of what we're trying to do to keep them.
At this stage of the game, don't we get stuff straightened out in this state? But that's just my opinion, from experience.
So, are we comfortable to take a vote, or do we want to? I, I, I'd like, I think that we need to wrap this up. So, we can either take a vote tonight, or we can move it to next week. So, it, so we need to, all right, so we'll take a vote. Unless anybody wants to amend their motion. Okay. So, Tim? The, the motion on the floor is the first revote with added the plant operations, um, cut.
Uh, confirmation on the yield change.
With the confirmation on the yield change.
That makes, that makes a decision for me slightly easier. So, yes, I'm fine with it. I, I will say, I just, you know, I appreciate what Jeff did, and I do hope, right, that, I mean, we just went through that, that, and I trust that the administrators and everyone will be vigilant, that we make good decisions, fiscal decisions with the budget that we put out, you know? And, uh, like Colin said, don't want to come to the end of the game with some enormous surplus, as though we didn't think this through. But, um, I have full faith in the situation that we're in, that I can trust the administrators to make some good decisions. And Jeff, you're more than willing to share your thoughts, right? So like, you know, if you see something askew over, then, hey, we're here to, you know, at least ask the right questions, so.
So long would it, yes?
Yes.
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 And I'm also voting no, because I still feel like we could go a little lower. But the yeses have it, so we'll go back out to vote with that. Possible warning approval. Can Louis get this for us to sign tomorrow? Or should we wait till next week and sign it and push this vote to May 28th?
We could have it ready by tomorrow. I could talk to Louis. I'm just plugging a number in, not that we know what it is.
All right, so we'll come to the school tomorrow. I'll send you, or Christine can send a note when it's at the school, when Pam has it.
Yeah, it probably will be till the afternoon.
Afternoon tomorrow. All right, so when you can, try to get into, um, sign that. Ballot discussion.
Is there even a ballot discussion on the 28th day, or what day do we need to look at?
When do we want to hold the vote? The 21st or the 28th?
I thought it's.
That's part of the ballot discussion. If we hold it the 28th, we could potentially, I believe, potentially mail the ballots if we get the approval in tomorrow. Would that be correct?
I'm sorry?
If we hold the vote on the 28th, would there be enough time if we had our approval set for tomorrow to warn?
Uh, that's kind of a carry question.
Seven, seven days is the minimum you can warn.
For us to warn, but what about mailing? The time it takes?
There's a 20-day statute under C, under 20, paragraph C, that says they have to be mailed out 20 days before the vote. So if you backdate from the, uh, 28.
That would be the 8th.
Yeah, that would be Wednesday.
It's the 6th today.
You still have to get the envelopes. You still have to get.
So that wouldn't, so either way.
We wouldn't be able to.
So, so we will not be able to mail out ballots. I, I hear what you're saying, Don, but it, we just don't logistically have that time.
I, I, I'm not sure that I understood why you have to have it so early in May. Why?
So that we have a chance to vote again in June, before the July 1st deadline, if it doesn't pass? So that we have a chance to vote again in June before the July first deadline, if it doesn't pass.
Well, isn't the standard to have three votes?
I don't know what the standard is. I don't, I, it's just to pass the budget. It doesn't matter how many votes we have, we have to pass the budget. It's just the timing of when it passes, how that affects all the tax notices going out and what we can borrow. And it, it will be very chaotic if we do not pass this by July first. So we really need to get it done. And we don't know what's gonna happen this time. We're gonna, I think, do a better job of messaging and I'm open to pushing the messaging, messaging a little bit further to next week and just come up with a concrete, concrete plan, 'cause it's already late.
You know, I, I, it's unfortunate, but I think you're, you're dealing with a self-fulfilling prophecy. You're jamming yourself so close that you're saying you can't mail them out. And because you can't mail them out, you may lose the vote and have to have another one, or another one, or another one.
Lilly?
I tend to agree with that.
Why not just?
I kinda think going all in on this vote, getting the messaging, going all in and just really hitting that we have to pass this.
That's right.
This is what's right for our kids, this is what's right for our community. It absolutely has to happen and giving a little more time and trying with all effort not to have to do a fourth vote. Because I think if you could mail it and you could add more information, 'cause one of the things I noticed is the information that came with the second ballot was kind of confusing. So I think if we can get better information out there, and I'm happy to help if that would be useful, and just give everything we have to getting that vote to work, I think, might serve you better than trying to get, get it to happen too quickly.
I'll agree with that.
Matt?
I wouldn't even mind if we.
Sorry, just a reminder that this board has the power to ask the select board to mail the ballots. We still then have to debate it and approve it.
Yeah, it's me tomorrow.
Of course, you're asking, be asking us to spend more money, which we don't, we have not budgeted for any of this. So we have, we may, we may be able to cover it, but that's something that we then have to review and discuss.
Well, they're flush, don't worry about it.
So I'm just saying, your decision, I, we still have to decide.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not in a hurry, I'm okay pushing it back. We got a lot of messaging we need to get out, we gotta reach a lot of people. I'd be interested, you know.
I think you gotta take more time. Right, you gotta take more time rather than less to get, uh, you know, get a program together. You, you're, you're pushing the limits of people's availability and equipment and timing and, you know, the, the PEC TV program's gotta be scheduled and.
Yeah, I wanna reach as many people as.
I think the end of May is too soon, really.
We, we went that avenue this last time, it didn't serve us very well. That's part of the problem, I think, a little bit gun shy on that one, but, um.
Yeah, we only gotta convince thirty people, actually fifteen, sixteen.
Seventeen, it was thirty-three, so we need a little bit more.
I, I don't think that's the, the business where I, I think we would like to.
Play the numbers.
Have a community. I say, I don't think this, that's the business where I am. I think, at least personally, I stay here wanting to really bring the community together, you know, so. And I think more candid conversations like we just had, you know, might do that, so.
All right, so if that's the case, we can decide on the date and messaging next meeting?
Sounds great.
With some input from the select board and.
Well, the warning, the fourteenth then, I'm not gonna have Louis rush.
Yeah, that's fine, then, yeah.
So, just again, you have to make a decision that we then have to meet about afterwards, so we're meeting tomorrow night. So if you don't make a decision now, then you can decide next week, week after that, before we can decide.
So do we wanna hear if the select board would potentially, um, pay for mail-in ballots if we choose to mail them?
Yes.
Would you mind?
Oh, we, we are not warned as a meeting tonight, so.
No, that's not, no, 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 no.
Can we ask, can we ask you to debate that tomorrow?
If you have a proposal for us, as the last time, we did reserve on our agenda discussion of the school board's discussion. So we have a place reserved.
So do I have a motion to request the select board, um, pay for mail-in ballots, should we choose to mail them?
Yes, or some, whatever, wherever we are, in Robert's roles, yes, some, what you just said.
No, you have to say the motion, she can't. I motion to ask the select board if they are willing to pay for it if we choose to send them out. Is that what you wanna?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Second, we don't have to second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Just to be clear, also, the statute does say that you guys are supposed to pay. We understand you're not going to pay, so.
Understood, Matt, thank you. We appreciate that.
Well, Matt, what's that, what's that statute mean? It says if they approve it.
They, the statute says they can ask us to approve it. And if we approve it, they're supposed to pay for it.
It comes out of their budget.
So it's actually a two-fold thing. One is to get our approval to mail out ballots and the second is to have the town side pay for the ballots and the mailing, so there's.
Do we have to ask to mail it out or do we?
Yes.
Because I thought that we could.
No, you can vote to mail it out.
Yeah, we could just vote to mail it out.
Yeah.
No, you, this still has to be approved by the select board, it's the quirk in the statute.
That's interesting.
Yes, it is.
All right, um, would you like to amend your motion?
Y- yes, I'm gonna amend it.
To what she said?
Yep, to what she said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous.
You guys do you.
So, um, we, we're pushing the messaging to next time and then we do have public comments. I think we've kind of had public comments throughout. Does anyone have any final thoughts they'd like to share online?
Oh, I just wanna, I wanna thank the board very much for this meeting and, and the input that you've given has been very, very helpful, so.
We appreciate all you guys sitting here for three plus hours and giving us your input.
Yeah, we get to do it again tomorrow night.
We have an SU meeting, sorry, I would be there anyway. We have our supervisor union board tomorrow night and then we have this local board's meeting next Tuesday night, the fourteenth.
I'm back, same place, same bat channel.
So thank you, everyone, for coming and we do not need executive session tonight, Chris. So I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Don't climb it, hey.
Aye.